We're now recording. Agreed. They're still pouring in, so I'm just going to give it one more minute. Let's make sure all board members are here as soon as, here we go. Right, Donna, do you have the administrators you're looking for?
I didn't see Troy come in. Troy, are you here?
I saw him.
Okay.
But I could be wrong. Troy, speak up if you're here. I thought I saw you.
I'm here.
Very good. And there's Lynn. All right. Does that sound good to you, Donna?
Yes, I think we should get started.
Okay, I do too. There's a lot to do tonight, so. First off, I want to say welcome to the Cape Elizabeth School Board, this special business meeting, Tuesday, August 1st, 2020 via Zoom. These are difficult and unique, different times, for sure. We're reinventing the wheel in everything that we do. And these meetings are similar. There have been some questions as to why we are even contemplating going into classrooms and still doing board meetings via Zoom. And one of the reasons that we're continuing this is we want to maximize the participation. And with social distancing, there would be a great limit to the amount of people that could come into Town Hall. So this just allows for that much more access for people to be present for this. So thank you for understanding that. I also am going to try to run this. Last meeting was a business meeting and it turned out to become more of like a workshop or a forum, which I think was very necessary. It turned out to become a lot of question answering and a lot of comments from teachers and members of the community. And I am glad that it turned out that way. I think that was very important. Tonight, we have a lot of information to cover. There's a lot of presentations on administrators and then the board has to do the due diligence, the work of discussing before votes. So that being said, I just want to explain that we're going to try to treat this very similar to a business meeting that would happen inside Town Hall. And there is a chat feature here that we tried to turn off, but we were unsuccessful. So if you can avoid the chat feature, we would very much appreciate that. And we're not going to be looking at it at all. Same is true with Facebook Live. We can't access any kind of communication there. There will be comment on the agenda. The second item on the agenda is comments. And I'll speak to that when we get to that point a little bit. But before we do get started, I just want to welcome everybody. Say thank you so much for your interest, for being here. These are not easy times. These are very difficult decisions. There, there's no ideal choice by any means. I have been reading so many emails and I am so touched by the heartfelt sentiments, concerns, comments, recommendations, suggestions, and questions that have come through. We will hopefully try to answer as many of those tonight as possible through the presentations. Chances are, we will not answer every question, but the administrators have all seen them. A list of the questions has been compiled and shared with them with the hope that they will try to answer as many of those as possible. I want to thank you for your grace of the understanding. There was so many emails that were sent that were respectful, appreciative of the work we're doing and patient. So thank you for all of that. And I want to say again, thank you for the work that the leaders in our district, the superintendent, the administrators, the nurses, Perry, the facilities director, and all the thinking. And I don't even know all the details, but I know there's been a lot of teachers involved, putting their minds and doing trainings on their own. So thank you, thank you, thank you. We are going to try to keep this meeting to two hours if possible. We'll have to reevaluate, but out of respect for people's time, that is the goal. So that being said, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? Donna, are we going to use your, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, to start with, are there any adjustments to the agenda? And I did not. So. Hope, I see Hope raising her hand. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a question and potentially propose a change. So the last time we met, we approved the calendar first and then we heard a presentation. And I think some of us thought, hey, that seemed like it was, it should have been in a different order because the calendar may presupposes a result of the discussion. So maybe we want to swap them?
Thank you for that, Hope. We actually spoke with Donna Kimberly as the vice chair myself. We spoke to Donna and she had it that way with it second. And we thought it was a little more streamlined this time and that we could get that over with. But I am fine to have it be afterwards. I think the conversation about the agenda will maybe answer some of the questions that people have and sort of answer some of what we're looking for in making the vote about how to start school. And I think my reason for wanting it first was that the the piece that tripped us up last, last time was that we didn't realize that many districts were changing the flex day from Friday and Wednesday. And so my understanding is that this presentation of the calendar is pretty straightforward and there's no sort of surprise from other communities that might trip us up later. But I am totally fine to change it to afterwards if that's the will of the board. Why don't I just, not as a vote, but because I can't see everybody and see your nodding, I'm just going to call your name, board members, and if you'd like it changed to after, you can say change. If you'd like it where it is, you can just say where it is. Does that sound good, Hope? Yep. So I'm going to vote to keep it where it is, but I don't really care. Kimberly, do you have an opinion?
I'll vote to keep it where it is.
Phil.
I'll vote to move it. That made a lot of sense to me.
Okay, that's fine. Elizabeth?
No opinion.
Okay. Nasser?
I will follow Elizabeth. No opinion.
Okay, Hope.
I, I think we should move it. If it presupposes red, yellow, or green, we're putting the cart before the horse.
Okay, so you're saying move it? Yeah, is what I hear. Great. And then Laura?
I'd vote on moving it, please.
Okay, so Willie will move the vote for the calendar to after, the end of the meeting. Any other, thank you for that, Hope. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay, moving on, we have comments from the public. And this is my last little spiel and speech. As I mentioned before, we're going to try to keep this similar to a regular business meeting. And I just want to review what that means. Again, last time, it morphed into something a little different, but necessary at the time. Our comment, based on policy, comments from the public time is a 20-minute slot. And members of the community are allowed to speak for a three-minute timeframe. We will be timing you just to sort of keep tabs on it a little bit. If you can refrain from repetition, one thing I would like to say is that I have spoken to board members. I know every board member has read with open hearts every one of the emails that have come in. So, you know, trying to not be too repetitive in your comments or concerns would benefit with the timing. Again, I just want to reiterate that we're not using chat. The way this will work is that you will raise your hand. Can somebody, Elizabeth, I'm thinking you might know this, or maybe Laura, because you're familiar with Zoom. Can somebody remind people how to raise their hand electronically?
Yep, you can just go to reactions, which is at the bottom of your screen, tap on reactions. Oh, and then, but I don't see it there. Let me see, participants.
If you click on.
You go to participants and then you go to raise hand. Yes.
Okay, great.
No participants and raise hand. Great.
Okay, so if you would like to speak, thank you for that, Lauren and Elizabeth. If you would like to speak, you go under participants, click raise hand. I'll be looking for those blue hands to call on people. So that being said, are there any comments? I see Josh Dennison. Do you want to unmute yourself?
Good evening. Josh Dennison, 17, Bay Area, Cape Elizabeth, Maine. I just wanted to first start by say thank you for holding this meeting tonight. I know that I was on the last meeting and it got a little crazy. And I won't beat a dead horse, but I do want to say that, you know, I worked here in town for Public Works, going on 13 years. I've been a citizen of Cape Elizabeth on and off my whole life. And now as an adult and parent with two children in the school system. Was able to be back here and raise my kids. Very proud of that. My kids attended summer camp this summer. I think that the town manager sent out a beautiful email thanking all the people who made that happen. My kids were very safe and had no issues whatsoever. Actually told us that it was the best summer camp that they had ever had. And I really appreciate all the hard work that went into that via Kathy Raffus and Kelly Finney. And on the fact of going back to school, it's very important for me personally and my family and my wife and I that our child is in the classroom. He does very well within classroom learning. Remote learning is very tricky for him. You know, I feel that given the pandemic, we're in new times and new times call for new protocols and things that we've all had to get adjusted to. I was home last fall with my kids doing the home educational piece. It was very difficult. I provide for this town. As you know, Public Works, I plow roads and keep things open. And, you know, I was not able to be at my job and I'm very thankful that the town let me be home. I will ever be thankful for that. But it is very important to me and my family for our children to be in the classroom learning. I think it can be done safely for those who choose to do it. The numbers are there, especially if you watch today. I think that, you know, I see both sides of it. I'm not a closed-minded person. I understand with teachers and families. I personally liked the Friday being the floating day because it made it towards the end of the week and it was a little bit easier, but I do understand coinciding and helping with teachers with their schedules with the other kids. I do look at teachers as essential workers. My wife works in the hospital, running a floor mean medical center. She sees patients day in, day out, and we've been living through this just fine and going about our lives and being the best practice we can. You know, it is not easy to be a working parent where both of us leave the house at 6:30 in the morning and have to worry about knowing if our kids are going to be able to go to school or not financially and as far as mentally, especially on the mentally aspect. You know, it, mental health of the children and the, the interaction at school is very important, especially for younger kids and older kids. Some say, oh, well, just the younger kids needs to go. I think it's just as important for the older kids in high school. It all stems down to just doing our best, our best practices and supporting our children to get the best education they can. And I can only speak for myself and my family, but I know that our children really need to be in the school system where they learn best. Thank you very much for all your time and hard work and I'm proud to be a part of this community and employee of the town. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Josh. And thank you for all you do for our town. Are there any else? I'm not seeing any, so I'm just going to give another moment. I know that sometimes, there we go. Audra Gore, I would like to invite you to speak. You have three minutes. If you want to unmute yourself.
Thank you. I would love, if it could be possible, to maybe have a district-wide opportunity, for example, on Thursdays, all the assignments, all the schedules, all the plans for the next week to be announced. And that way it allows families with so many different dynamic schedules and things happening. If parents are available on weekends to help their children, it then gives a chance for those families to help their kids before things are late, but to actually participate within the school's schedules and the assignments and whatnot. But if it was district-wide with families balancing multiple schools of elementary, middle school, high school schedules. Just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Betsy Nielsen is up. You can unmute yourself. Betsy?
Thank you. I know that you said that you received lots of emails today from people and I'm sure you've been inundated with those, but there's really no way to know whether or not one that we sent did get through. So I'm not sure if you would prefer not to have people go ahead and read those things or not, but in, just in case that it didn't get through, I did want to share what I had sent to the board, if that's okay.
I can share that it did get through.
Yeah.
All right, so is your, were your comments in the beginning to urge people to not repeat those or?
Comments in the beginning, Betsy, were to say, I did not respond. I had family visiting and was not responding to emails. I did read them. I did not sit down. If an email came in today, I did not respond to them. But I have responded to probably 75 to 100 emails in the past two weeks. So I have past 10 days. So my apologies for not getting that to you. And my point being earlier is that I think your message was read and heard and understood by the board members. So, but I, I see Phil nodding his head yes. I see Donna saying that she's seen it and Hope and I know that, and Laura, I know that our board is very. So if the intention was to read it in order to be sure that the board saw it, I, I can guarantee that based on what I'm seeing and what I know, that, that it was read and heard and taken to heart.
I didn't mean that as any type of slight for not having a response. I understand that.
And I didn't think you did. I did not think you did. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for sharing your thoughts. They're important to hear everybody's opinions and voices in this. Are there any other comments? Okay, Zakiya Nelson, you have the time.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I wondered if you could share with me and the group if there is a procedure for investigating some, you know, suspected cases among students or teachers or staff. So for example, if, you know, Bobby goes home with a sore throat and, you know, fever or whatever, what happens after that with regards to the teachers that, that student may have come into contact with or other students, the classroom? You know, would there be quarantining or testing and how is that going to be communicated to the families that that student may have come into contact with? And I also have a quick follow-up question. I don't know whether you want me to say it now or wait until you've answered that one.
Thank you, Zakiya. This, you may have come in a little bit late. This comment period is not a question-answer period. We are not going to respond right now to.
I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. Perhaps the nurses will touch on that in their presentation, but thank you for that question. If you'd like to follow through, you have another minute and a half. If you'd like to just throw a question out there, again, we won't respond, but we're listening.
Okay, sure. Another question that I will throw out there, not expecting your response, but perhaps the nurses or I can get an answer another time is whether the, the school department has a has considered a threshold number of cases, if there were to be cases in the, you know, with students that would return in the hybrid model before they would consider going 100% remote. So in the hybrid model, if there are cases or infections that are reported and confirmed, you know, at what point might there be a switch to the 100% remote model if, you know, it's necessary? So thank you. And I'm sorry, I did come in a couple of minutes late, so my, my apologies to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Zakiya. We're all learning. I see that John Volt has his hand raised. John, if you want to unmute yourself, you have three minutes. Welcome. Are you there, John? It looks like he took his hand down. I'm not sure he actually wanted to speak. Are there any other comments? Again, I just want to give it a little bit of time. I see John, or Cree Swift, if you would like to unmute. You have three minutes.
Hi, Heather. Thank you. This is Cree Swift. I'm at 88 Oakhurst Road and a parent to a high schooler and a middle schooler. And I just wanted to raise for the school board, the students in the special education program. And I think, following up a little bit on Audra's comment suggestion about sort of setting up clear schedules for students on Thursdays. I don't necessarily support Thursdays, but I do think particularly for children in special education curriculum, if we go to a hybrid or a remote learning situation of any sort, the importance of clear communication with families and consistent, consistent forum, whether it's Zoom or Google meets or Flipgrid or whatever it is, if you're dealing with a student, and this is probably true for some of the younger elementary students as well, but if you're dealing with a student who is unable to read, for example, who's getting dozens of emails every day telling him what's going on in his classes and you're dealing with kids without executive functioning skills who are trying to keep straight what classes they have on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, whatever. That was a very challenging remote learning experience. And I hope that if, if we do end up in a remote or hybrid learning model, I hope that, that the school board is paying a lot of attention to what's happening in the special education programs in particular, because I think those are very challenging. Thank you.
Thank you, Cree. John, if you would like to try again, you can unmute yourself and you have three minutes. John Volt. John.
Test.
Is this John?
Yes.
Okay, you have three minutes, John.
Sorry.
No worries.
So, um, I just wanted to pull back a little bit. I know that this semester, upcoming semester is going to be probably like any other we've ever had. Last year's was, so we started normal and sort of things went to sort of make do, go remote, do the best you can. But now we're sort of going into this, planning a little bit, knowing what's, what's coming. And things are changing really rapidly. And I got to say, I, I have a concern that things are going to be. I don't see what the rush is to get everyone back in the building. I understand what the testing levels are here in Maine and here in the Northeast. But those things change relatively fast. And we've seen schools across the nation open and close again right away with many cases. We're heading into the winter where we're going to have people more indoors than ever before, after all the schools open. And I just worry that this semester is different than any other semester. Every week we wait, every month we wait, every quarter we wait. We're that much closer to more effective treatment, possible vaccines, and more effective national mitigation. And if you've seen what the disease experts have been saying about what's going to be happening likely in our country, if we don't have effective national mitigation, is a significant rise in cases. And those are likely to come here to us. Two weeks ago, we had schools open, even though we're seeing cases dropped now, those numbers show up in two weeks. And then two weeks after that, they'll show up where those people have traveled. And lots of people in Cumberland County travel, less than before, but they travel a lot. That's why I think we had cases here early. So I would just urge folks to think about delaying in-person for those that can do it as much as possible and to think about prioritizing in-person learning as safe as possible for those that need it the most. Younger kids and kids who have special needs, I think, would be a priority for using your in-person space as safely as possible. And those that can go remote or do something that's not in-person, it will be, likely be a very different world. Something we can all better plan for and much more like what we're used to when the next semester begins. So I appreciate everyone's work and effort. It's not an easy situation, but I have to ask again, really, what is the rush to get people back in the building? Right now, I feel like, you know, we've gotten a little bit complacent. It's like playing on the highway at midnight when there's no cars. You're still playing on the highway. You're going to get results right now because our testing numbers right now are low, that are not indicative of the risk you may actually be undertaking.
Thank you, John. Thank you. I see Eliza Rousher.
Hi, yes, it's Chris and Eliza Rousher at 53 Beach Buff. Thanks for all your hard work on this. I know these are very different and difficult times and thanks for your communication. We are interested in hearing a discussion about outdoor classrooms, especially for younger students and for families who may choose to do the remote option, but would be interested in a hybrid model wherein the, our students could go to school one or two days a week for outdoor classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. And then this is our last speaker. This is our time limit. I have A. Ranniger.
Hi, yes, it's Alice Riehner.
Hi.
Hi, you know what, I hate to be on this screen, but I'll do it. Forgive me. Just, I wanted to comment, I've become, like many of us, so focused on reading as much as we can to learn what's going on with COVID-19, and even listening to our CDC director's press sessions that he has now twice a week. And, you know, we had one case yesterday statewide, and he said that it's absolutely possible we could be like Florida or Arizona. And it just set me aback that he said that because since July 1, which is now more than six weeks, we've been open to many other states, and even before that, we knew a lot of people came in, and there's not been a single outbreak related to all the tourism. If you go to Old Orchard Beach, very few people wore masks, there's been no outbreak. I believe that we've opened up a lot and to have not seen not only a big spike, but no spike, in fact, a decline, I think we can actually be optimistic and hopeful that if we stick to the basic CDC guidelines that, and I know I did put this in my email to you, but I'm so emphatic that delaying, I think, hurts our children and our families more than going back, being hopeful that covering our droplets, covering our mouths with masks, washing our hands, keeping a distance when we can, will allow us to be as safe as possible. So I wanted to share that. And thank you so much. And thank you for that hijack as well, for all your work.
Yeah. Thank you so much. So this concludes the comment portion of the meeting. We'll move on to item three, which are administrative reports, and we'll start with our superintendent, Wilfrid.
Coming. So I would like to thank the many staff and parents and citizens who have weighed in on the start of school this fall. As Heather commented, we have spent a lot of time reading the emails, and the administrative team has had many long discussions with the first concern of safety, and the second concern of providing an excellent education for our students. Always with the concern of what is best for our students. We've listened to parents who have pleaded with us to open our schools for the social and emotional well-being of their students, and also to parents and staff who want to keep our school buildings closed. We have thoroughly reviewed the main CDC guidelines and have continued to work on our ever-evolving plans. Our calendar change proposal reflects many of the requested changes, and I'll talk about those in a minute. Whatever's decided tonight surely will not please everybody. However, again, we've identified safety of students and staff and providing an excellent education to our students as our two top priorities, and that's the administrative team I'm talking about. I did receive word today that the main CDC has updated their guidance, and this will be posted tomorrow morning at seven o'clock, I said, for those of you who will tune into that. So in order to meet the needs of staff, and again, we listened to what everybody said and read all the emails, and we propose are proposing to move the the non-maroon or gold day, which was Friday, to Wednesday, to be more consistent with our neighboring districts. Staff will work from home that day, using the morning to support their students who need extra support, and the afternoon for planning with their colleagues in grade level, content areas, or department teams, or on the designated PD days, participating virtually in those PD opportunities. So we have, we're proposing to move the Wednesday, the Friday to Wednesday. We've also reviewed the requests for adding planning, training, and preparation time at the start of the year. And we propose that August 24 through September 3 be used as PD and training days for staff, as well as preparing rooms for safety, should we go into the hybrid model. This will require removing unnecessary furniture. This preparation would require removing unnecessary furniture and materials from classrooms in order to facilitate cleaning, disinfecting, and sanitizing. Teachers would be required to be in their classroom for these two weeks for the virtual trainings, and they may bring their children with the understanding that they need to stay in the teacher's classrooms. Training, all the trainings for teachers would will be virtual, and will focus on protocols and procedures within a school day, health and safety practices, preparing rooms, and technology changes such as the use of Zoom through the district, the improved use of technology for remote and in-class learning, and the many state mandated trainings that schools are required to provide for teachers each year. Staff will spend time during these two weeks preparing the rooms in order to provide social distancing and removing all personal furniture, rugs, toys, et cetera. And right now Perry's looking into storage places such as warehouses, trailers, or places in the community to store any extra furniture or items that that are removed from the classroom. So that would be the first two weeks of school, staff only in school with their children allowed in their classrooms with them. September 8 through 18 will be used to roll in various groups of students. We're calling the student roll-in weeks as we begin the hybrid model, if we begin the hybrid model. It would help us with our training of students in the room in very small groups and test our safety procedures again in small groups, such as moving in the hallways, bathroom procedures, lunch procedures, et cetera. The first day of roll-in, which would be September 8, would be used differently according to the needs of each school. For example, possibly at the high school, bringing in freshmen. We've talked about many different possibilities for that. Wednesdays, September 9 and 16 would be used to distribute devices to students participating in the 100% remote learning program, as well as giving those remote students the opportunity to meet their teachers either in person in the morning or virtually during the afternoon. Remote assignments for staff will be made on the basis of documented high-risk circumstances and the need based on the number of students requesting the 100% remote learning experience. We are putting out forms and brief descriptions of the 100% remote learning experience, and people will need to complete those forms. So that the principals need the numbers of students in order that that we can do planning, so we can plan for those students. It may mean moving some students that we thought were going to be in class if we do the or in school during the hybrid to a remote situation. So it will impact the the way we use our staff. Other days during the two student roll-in weeks, we'll work with a maroon and gold structure in order to get people used to that, based on the specific groups of students that have been identified to attend that day. And principals will be communicating who those students are. Students for the two roll-in weeks will be distributed, schedules for the two roll-in weeks will be distributed by the principals of each school. During these days, students will receive health and safety trainings and technology trainings. There'll be a focus on the social emotional needs of our students, as well as executive functioning, building relationships, and training for students and safety protocols, and building procedures. So these will be done in very small groups. These two weeks will allow us to test our buildings for safety procedures and technology capacities with smaller groups of students. During the 100% remote learning program, students will be meeting their teachers and receive trainings in scheduling, instructional expectations, and new technology that will be necessary for instruction during these two student roll-in weeks. On September 21, we're proposing that the maroon and gold regular content area instruction will start for all students according to the maroon and gold schedule. This every other day planned for the in-school hybrid model, in students build on the educational model of direct instruction and gradual release by the teacher on the day of in-school instruction, followed by time to individually practice and develop questions on the remote day, with the teachers correcting misconceptions without several days of incorrect practicing. Students have been carefully divided into learning groups in order to social distance at three feet and six feet for eating. Family considerations have been made, as well as creating a balance, especially at the elementary and middle levels, of gender, abilities, needs, and all of the other considerations that staff look at in order to create balanced classes. Implementation of a hybrid model would hinge on at least two important factors. The first one is the availability of PPE, and the second one is the available of availability of substitutes to supervise students. We have ordered a supply of PPE through the state, and this supply supply should last at least into November. Included in this order is 1,986 boxes of 50 each, three ply disposable masks, 7,944 cloth mask coverings, 460 face shields, 265 gallons of hand sanitizer, and 1,890 KN95 non-medical disposable masks. All students and staff will be required to wear masks at all times during the school day. Students and staff may provide their own masks, as long as they are in accordance with accepted CDC standards. We will have extra masks on hand to supply to those who need need or want them. Students will be required to wear masks to school as specified in the document from the main Department of Education Framework for Reopening Schools, and I quote, "Adults, including educators and staff, are required to wear a mask or face covering." Students aged two and above are required to wear a mask slash face covering that covers their their nose and mouth. Masks, face coverings must be worn by all students on the bus. So this would be explained to parents in the parent contract that they would be asked to sign. Mask breaks for students will be provided periodically with six feet of social distancing required during those times. Students who feel that they cannot comply with the mask requirement should enroll in the remote learning program, should a hybrid model be adopted tonight. We have surveyed substitutes on our list, and approximately half of those substitutes have agreed to substitute again this year. We raised the substitute pay. However, we will be needing more substitutes in our buildings to supervise our students. I would urge any parents or community members who wish to substitute to contact our business office to apply. That would be extremely helpful because we can't have school if we don't have coverage for our students. Should we not receive PPE before the proposed start of school? Should we run out of PPE, or should we not have enough coverage for our in-school students? We will need to move to a remote learning situation. Signage has been ordered and is starting, Perry will probably talk about that later, but it's starting to filter in. So moving the start date for students back one week should allow time for the now predicted delivery date of August 31 to be met, and the installation of signage to occur. Ventilation is an area of extreme concern as we look at our aging buildings. Perry will speak more about the ventilation issue tonight. He's walked each building and identified areas of ventilation concern, and we will move, work to move staff and students in these areas to alternate settings in order to provide them a safe environment. This will be mean being creative in our use of space within our buildings, such as possibly using larger areas such as cafeterias, gymnasiums, or alternate classrooms. There have been many questions about schedules and descriptions of programs for both the hybrid model and the 100% remote learning model. School administrators and teams of teachers have been working for most of the summer on these plans, and principals will describe somewhat their plans tonight. Unless teachers have a doctor's note recommending that they teach remotely, they will be expected to be teaching from their classrooms, whether we start school in the 100% remote model or the hybrid model, where they will have access to all their teaching materials and will be able to give their undivided attention to their students on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Again, Wednesday would be an at-home student support and virtual planning meeting and PD on PD Wednesdays. This plan would address our first two priorities, safety, because staff would be working by themselves in the rooms, and providing a quality education experience for our students. Wednesdays again will be a work-from-home day for staff, again, offering student support in the morning and planning with colleagues, and participating in PD sessions in the afternoons. The administrative team has thoroughly studied scheduling options for the hybrid model, such as eliminating half-day sessions due to the lack of disinfecting time between sessions. I know that that was discussed, and actually sounds like a great idea, have half the kids in the morning, half the kids in the afternoon, but there is not time to disinfect between sessions. We have identified the model that as educators and administrators, we feel will be the safest for our students and offer the best education in these circumstances. Principals have been working on student assignments, but we need, we've now discovered that we need the information regarding the 100% remote enrollment in order to finalize those lists. So we will be, again, sending out enrollment forms, I believe, tomorrow with descriptions of the programs, and then the assignments will be distributed to parents and sent to Pat Fowler in the transportation department so that she can work on the busing schedules. We are required to provide three feet social distancing spaces on the buses, so only students assigned to specific buses will be allowed to ride those buses. Busing schedules will be released when they are incomplete, closer to the opening of school, if we open in the hybrid model. Questions about have been asked about our efforts to improve the remote learning experience for our students. Director of Teaching and Learning Kathy Stankert will provide information about our efforts towards this improvement tonight, and principals will describe the efforts to improve remote learning within their staff. Several community members, we heard one tonight, have asked about the possibility of outside learning environments for our students. So when we make the decision about the model of instruction that we will open within the fall, we will be exploring spaces that are available for this learning around our campus and scheduling those opportunities. Noel will be talking later tonight about issues with the connectivity outside of our school buildings, and that will impact the use of technology outside. Tonight, Jeff Thorak will be offering the latest information about athletics, another area of concern. This is an area that has been in flux all summer, with guidance from the Main Principals Association constantly changing, requiring each athletic director to alter plans. This guidance will likely continue to change throughout the rest of the summer as and fall as conditions change. After a decision is made regarding the model in which we will start school, we will develop more details and distribute information to parents through our website, Tower School, and our Facebook page. There are many procedures that have been developed throughout the summer as administrators and teachers have worked and reworked our strategies for what instruction will look like in various models. There are still many, many, many details to work out, and we will convey the information as soon as possible. Undoubtedly, as we start the year, we will encounter procedures and schedules that do not work, and unexpected, unanticipated challenges. We will be constantly reassessing our plans and revising if needed. We ask for your patience in these trying and challenging times. We are in uncharted and stressful times, and we were working long hours in order to plan for our students' education. As we progress through the next few weeks, staff and parents should refer specifics, procedural questions to their building administrators. District questions can be referred to me at central office. We ask for your patience as we work to distribute information, and we respect your frustration as you try to plan for the fall. Thank you.
Thank you for that very detailed description, Donna, and into these conversations. I just want to remind everybody of two sort of details. If you can be sure to mute yourself so that we can hear more clearly the presenters, and just a reminder, if anybody showed up late, that we are not using chat section of feature of Zoom. So I do see Elizabeth's hand up.
It might be helpful to just to wait until everybody presents. I don't know if you have a specific question for me, Elizabeth, or there's.
I do, and it's not about schedules or buildings or anything. I think it's just, it's something that I know, and it's something that you know, but it's something that I think many of the members of the public really don't understand. And I'm hearing a lot of dishwashing right now and talking, so.
Again, if, if, thank you.
So I think, Donna, it would be really helpful for everybody to understand, what does green actually mean to Cape Elizabeth? Why don't we, why can't we just throw the doors open and have everybody come in? Why don't we, why can't we just throw the doors open and have everybody come in? People, people honestly don't understand, you know, why we're having these conversations that we're having. So it'd be really helpful to understand that we have the the choice to go 100% remote and we have the choice to go hybrid. But we really don't have the choice to go 100% in person and you can talk about.
So there's really, there's really two levels of green. One would be kind of, I guess, a miracle or a vaccine where we would go. We would just all be able to go back to school like it was before and there would be no danger of COVID perhaps because of vaccinations. Or it disappeared miraculously or something. So we don't think that's going to happen. The other green is a green, but is everybody would come back to school, but you have to follow the CDC and the main Department of Education guidelines. We cannot do that because we cannot use six, we cannot offer six feet or three feet social distancing for all of our students. So a class of 20 plus a teacher, we don't have the spaces in our classroom to have all of the students come back with three feet of social distancing. Nor do we have the space likewise for the six feet of distancing that is needed for eating. So it's really the piece of about social distancing that is keeping us from from sending all of our students back. Does that help to answer that?
I think so. I just, I, there's been a lot of that circulating around the community. People don't understand that if everybody in the state is green, why I hear people saying, why, you know, why, why are people even considering hybrid? We're green and they don't understand that we have to follow.
There are very few districts that can go back with 100% of their students and and ensure the social distancing. Some of the newer schools that are built with bigger spaces are able to do that. There are very few. Some of the schools who have very low enrollment, their enrollment enrollments have dropped. You know, in the, in the far north of Maine, but in in our districts and in Cape Elizabeth, we just don't have the space to ensure social distancing according to the CDC guidelines.
Thank you, Donna.
For everyone.
Donna, and following up on that, am I correct to say that even if we got creative and used library spaces or gym spaces or outdoor spaces? When you do that, you split a classroom into two to allow for the social distancing and then we wouldn't have the staff to cover all the students. Is that correct?
That is correct. We'd have to double our staff. And we're still under the certification guidelines or laws really so that, you know, teachers have to be certified teachers, so.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Again, just a reminder to mute so that we can hear, we have the principals. How about we start with Jason, our J. Manterini's, our Pond Cove principal?
Thank you, Heather. Would I be able to share my screen? Are you able to make me a co-host or?
Jen will do her magic and make you a co-host. Yeah, you are on.
Oh, I, okay. Let's see. So Heather or Donna, could you hear me okay and see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Okay, great. So what I'll start by talking about tonight is I'll compare three models and but before I start, I do just wanna, I wanna thank the board for providing this opportunity for us to share tonight and for yourselves and for the community to perhaps learn a little bit more about what school might look like. So thank you for that. And also thank you to all the parents who I've been talking to on the phone or through email for the past week or so with a lot of great questions. Keep the questions coming. They're very helpful. So what I have here, what I'm going to talk about tonight are three possible models, just so that folks have a comparison between between them. So first I'm going to talk about if if we were in the red and we were full remote, what that might look like if we were not able to open schools. Then I'm going to talk about, given everything we know now, what the hybrid model would look like if we opened that way. And then finally, I'm going to talk about if we open in a hybrid model and some parents elected a full remote model for their child, what that might look like or most likely would look like, given every, all the information I have. Okay, so I'll start with this. This one here is the all-school full remote. So this is, this would be our plan if campus was, if we had to close campus, if we were ordered to close campus or we just could not open because the pandemic worsened. And I am going to forgive me, I don't want to just read through, but I am going to really refer to this. So you'll notice there are columns here, curriculum, delivery of instruction and schedule. And so in terms of the curriculum, obviously, if we're full remote, it, we, we learned about this in the spring. Access students accessing and teachers' abilities to access students. It does cause us to slow down our delivery of instruction a little bit. So this summer, a team of Pond Cove teachers has been working on a scope and sequence for curriculum. If we went into a full remote situation or if we went into a hybrid situation, what basically, what do we think we could teach and what would the timeline be for teaching those skills? So we've been working on that. There's a strong emphasis on reading and writing and math in the hybrid model. I'm sorry, in the full remote model, although there are would be select science and social studies standards addressed. The full remote model would include allied arts instruction. And there would be an emphasis on social emotional learning. There would be daily morning meetings and also an emphasis on that throughout the day to the best of our ability. Under the delivery instruction in the full remote, so students would be provided with iPads. We now have plans to be one-on-one, one-to-one for even kindergarten this year. Thank you to the tech department. Google Classroom would be utilizing a consistent platform, K to four. Every teacher, every classroom would be using Google Classroom to deliver lessons and instructional materials. At this time, the district has chosen Zoom for synchronous interactions rather than Google Meet. And there would be daily contact with teacher, daily morning meetings, consistent predictable schedule provided each day. At the elementary level, most of the instruction would be asynchronous, so not live streaming, but pre-recorded lessons and things of that nature. And we would provide reading and math RTI supports to students who need extra help. So and again, there's a law here, I'm going to go pretty quickly. So if we are full remote, we would, we would be delivering direct instruction remotely, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And on each of those days, K2 students would be provided with three to four hours of learning activities per day. And grades three, that would be for K to two students. And grades three to four students would receive four to five hours of learning activities a day. They would receive a schedule, a suggested schedule for families or caregivers or whoever's supervising the child that day that they could follow. And that would include suggestions for playtime, snack time, lunchtime. Of course, like anything else, the daily instructional hours may change. We're always looking at what we're doing, receiving feedback from teachers and students and families and adjusting what we're doing. So things may change throughout the year. Wednesdays would be, as Donna mentioned, student support time, remote office hours, and then also planning and professional development for teachers. Again, we would provide the electronic devices and we would even come up with a plan to safely distribute hard copy books, manipulatives, things like that early in the year for children to use throughout the year. I mean, what I'm going to talk about next is the hybrid model, which is something that we've been anticipating that that the decision may be made to open under the hybrid model. So again, a lot of this is the same. The curriculum team at Pond Cove has been working on a scope and sequence for curriculum assessment. Under the hybrid model, there would still be an emphasis on reading, writing, and math, but some science and social studies standards addressed. And allied arts would be provided with a combination of live and in-person, live in-person and remote instruction. And again, that emphasis on social emotional, this would be one of the benefits of the hybrid is that we'd have students on campus some of the time. The delivery of instruction, a lot of this is the same, still iPad, students would take them home, bring them back to school. Still Google Classroom platform, a lot of those things are similar. So at Pond Cove, if we open in the hybrid model, at this time with the information we have, we are going based on the assumption that the school day, the school hours would be the same as they always are. So that the days that students are on campus would be 8:35 to 2:55. Of course, with adjustments being needing to be made to transportation and social distancing on buses, we're not positive that the students would be able to arrive exactly when they usually do. But in general, the school, it would be a full school day. So students would be assigned to one of two groups, either maroon, maroon or gold. And we've been working as a district together to with the middle and the high school so that siblings throughout the district would be grouped in the same group, either maroon or gold, so their schedules would be consistent. Maroon and the maroon group would attend school on campus Monday and Thursday and then have mostly asynchronous remote instruction every Tuesday and Friday. And then the gold group would be on campus Tuesday and Friday and receive remote learning at home Monday and Thursday. And and again, same amount of hours of instruction while students are at home for K2 and 3, 4. And Wednesdays again, student support, office hours and in the morning and planning time and professional development for staff in the afternoon. And forgive me if I'm going too quickly, I'm certainly ready to take questions if needed after. A couple logistics, given everything, I know a lot of parents have been asking these questions. Given the information we have now in the hybrid model, the model with students attending school on campus two days a week, breakfast would be pre-ordered and served in classrooms. Lunch would be pre-ordered and served in classrooms. We would have recess, we're still working on the details of that. We're going to create an environment where students can play safely. Students would remain within a specific cohort and stay with that cohort to the extent possible throughout the day to reduce exposure and transmission. Common area and hallway travel would be greatly reduced. And every detail, even down to just for when students arrive at school, different grade levels would be coming in different doors. And so a lot of thought has gone into traffic patterns and we'll continue to work on that. So finally, in blue, this is parent elected full remote, right? So the full remote I talked about before was if the, we need to close our campus. This full remote is if our campus is open, at least partially, and parents elect full remote for their child. So it's a little different. But we have some information on that now. We have some data that we've been collecting. So we have a better sense of what that might look like. So again, we have that curriculum team working on that remote curriculum. Students would be assigned to a virtual classroom that would be taught by a Pond Cove teacher. And data right now, as of now, suggests that we'll be able to quite efficiently match students who have elected full remote with a teacher that that typically does teach in that grade level. Although that's not guaranteed, depending on the the actual data in the end, once parents have registered, some teachers may be teaching multi-age or multi-grade level classes in the full remote elected option. So that's possible. Again, it's the all the same, students iPads, Google Classroom, Zoom, very similar, just this is elected by parents. It would be the same as the emergency red remote. So Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, direct instruction, Wednesday, student support, teacher planning and prep. One of the things that Donna had mentioned that I have down here is, you know, we would be, we plan to provide opportunities and of course, it's optional for students to come in early in the year and possibly at a, at some sort of frequency throughout the year. If if we choose to do that and parents choose to do it, to come to campus and visit and meet their teachers and build that social connection live and in person. So with that, I know I just said a lot. And this is all information we can get out to parents as well, once the final decision is made. I would like to stop sharing my screen if I could, or does anyone on the board have questions and I could use this to refer or answer?
And I, I can't see Laura. I can't see Laura. Now raise your hands.
Yes, I use my raise hand feature. Thank you for this presentation, Jason, and I look forward to getting this information so I can just digest it a little bit more.
Yes, and I apologize for going so quickly. There's so much, but I wanted to just kind of get some things out there.
That's okay. So so some of these I may have missed. So my question is if a parent elects for the full remote option, it looks like the daily instruction will be pre-recorded. Will there be any live instruction? Did I miss that?
Yes. So so what I say here, what it says here in the middle column, most instruction asynchronous or pre-recorded. So now that is based on a few things so that and that doesn't mean that there will not be live interaction. And in a full remote model, you know, there would, we would tend to do everything we can to provide more live interaction than we would in the hybrid because the students are at least getting that when they come to school for two days in the hybrid. So basically, you know, there, there's, there's mixed opinions, but there's a pretty strong belief that the asynchronous and pre-recorded learning opportunities where they can be re-watched, rewound and re-watched, they can be used by parents who only have, who have weekends to go over some of this with their children, that it's just more supportive of families rather than expecting families to multiple times a day consistently log in at certain times with very young children in particular. So that a lot would be asynchronous. There certainly would be lots of effort to have live interactions with groups via Zoom and interact that way too. But a lot of the, the, when we're addressing learning standards, there would be asynchronous opportunities for certain. Is that helpful?
That, that makes, yes, a lot of sense. Now, would the teachers teaching this 100% virtual elected option, would they just be teaching this? They wouldn't be also teaching another class.
Right. So at this time, a lot, the, the staffing of this relies, the decision to make for staffing relies greatly on the number of students registered. And the preliminary data we have suggests that we have, you know, full classes per grade level interested in remote. So we would have a teacher with a full caseload of 18, 20 students and this would be what they would be doing. They would be very, very busy. So you know, it's possible if if there were very, very few full remote, then a teacher might do a couple of different things. But we, we are seeing that there's a need for teachers to be full-time, full-remote teachers for one grade level.
Okay, so it depends. And then in the, in the hybrid model, you had stated that they're going to be with a specific cohort. So is that, do you mean their classroom or?
Yes. So, so again.
Broken up into a smaller group.
So they'd be in their classroom in their cohort, right, in the hybrid model, 50% on campus at a time. So if there's a classroom of 20, 10 students would show up that day. And they would really be with those 10 students, their teacher. And then other teachers, specialists would, would, whenever possible, travel to their room or would be located close to that, to that wing area. So students do not have too far to travel and those specialists would have adequate PPE and use social distancing so that we would feel comfortable with students working with, with some other staff because we need to get, you know, those students connected with specialists such as guidance or social work or RTI reading or special education. So but we would, for the most part, try to keep them potted together with that cohort to reduce exposure.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
Not sure if anyone else. Okay, I've stopped sharing. And again, forgive me if that was rambling and too fast, I I can answer any questions.
Elizabeth, looks like she has her hand raised, go ahead, Elizabeth.
I just wanted to thank Jason and look forward to receiving this, so I can also read it, thanks.
Okay, I don't see any other hand raised, so thank you very much for that, Jason. Let's move on to the middle school with Troy Eastman, our principal there.
Hi.
Hi.
So I have asked if Donna can share my screen, I have sent.
I'm trying to find it.
Perfect.
Start talking.
Are talking, okay, so it's like cue the mic. So largely, my, what I'm going to have to show is basically an example schedule of what a family could expect in a hybrid room, hybrid. A hybrid model means that some remote and some in-person, and some people can choose to have zero in-person. That's really the only difference between the two. For us at the middle school, one of the priorities was, well, there's a couple of priorities. And one was to really focus on maintaining the smallest potting of kids and limit the number of teachers that would work with those kids in a day. So but I thoughtfully scheduling them. Largely, we've switched our whole middle school to two-person teams of teachers this year. We were planning to go to a content model for seventh and eighth grade. That has gone out the window because it would have caused kids to be in all kinds of different groups. So I think in another year, those would be benefits and strengths for kids. But in this model, I think it's more important to have the potting and and limit the exposure. So so with that said, we in a typical, what you'll see in a minute is a copy of my of a schedule. So what you have here is in the yellow, it says CMS hybrid model, choice of a hundred percent remote, so that's on the left side, and fifty percent remote, which is on the right. So in a hybrid model, it was important for us to make sure that everything was equitable. And not to inadvertently or purposely incentivize one method over another because I think it should be a parent's choice without any negative consequences to their choices. So our goal was, how do we make it all equitable? So for example, in the left column, if you chose in a hybrid model to be remote, you'd see this is for, this is an example of one schedule, doesn't mean everybody's schedule would go in that order, obviously. You know, it might say language arts first, it might say something else, but this is just a quick example. So a maroon hybrid model and and someone chose to be a hundred percent remote in the hybrid model. And on two days a week, they would have math, science, language arts, lunch, break, social studies, world language, and win slash advisory. And I'll get into that in a minute. Now typically, we would also have allied arts figured in there, so we'd have a seven-block schedule. We have reduced that as an attempt to limit some of the potting and reshuffling of kids to a six-block schedule. So this, well, with win and with the win advisory. So that would be a day that student, that would be a typical day. Now, if you look to the right, you would see that the kids peers that chose to be in school would have the same type of schedule going on. So no advantage or disadvantage to being remote or not remote. It's the same exact times, the expectations are the same, it would be the same, except for where you received your education. Now, on the other days, so Monday, Thursday, for example, this maroon designation would happen. On Tuesday, and it would be, I will call them the core content classes, so to speak, all in one day. And then on the other days, so it would be gold for that group. That would be their remote portion, obviously for the remote, but you'll see it's the same for the in-person choice. A remote day will look the same for everyone in that aspect of their of their off day. So it's going to consist of the core content, having extensions, homework, research, reading, some of that guided independent practice. And we are trying to limit that to thirty minutes per class. So for about two and a half hours maximum worth of work a student could have on the, on what I'm going to call the off day from their core content. Now also, there is no expectation in that for the teachers to have direct contact or do lead groups for that. And the rationale is because the teachers are teaching the other group in class that day. So it's really important for us to try and not have our teachers live in both worlds, trying to teach in class and then at the same time, teaching remotely. I think that would be a real challenge for them. So there will be one group of teachers that will be a room dedicated to remote learning. Now, as Jason said, if we had a large number of families decide for remote learning, then that would change. And we may, and we would have to add more teachers to that side of of the equation, so that could possibly grow. And then the part that I think is really helpful is allied arts is really the in-person direct contact for people on the on the in the on the example on the left, so on a gold day, the Tuesdays and Fridays, the people that would be reaching into your home and contacting your your students would be your allied arts teachers. And largely, that is some art, phys ed, music, and library, so those classes like that would be the ones to do that. We're thinking about combining our phys ed and health. That's a good example of trying to combine some some courses to limit some of the interactions. So allied arts would be the the people that you would be in contact with on that that day. So again, on the the column on the right, oh, my, you know, this family has chosen to have their kid in school for half of the time in a remote, in a hybrid model. So they will come to school, they'll go to math, they'll go to science, language arts. I say they go to it, largely the teachers are coming to them, not asking kids to move. And then the next day, they will be remote and they would have their core content up to two and a half hours of of work to do and an allied art schedule. Now, we just have that in there as a placeholder right now because we're working with them to try to maximize what would be the best allied art schedule for them. And how can we provide that? So that's why right now, that's just a placeholder. So largely, the additional information, which I can read most of it, it says, and this, these are some of the the parts that really went into into this scheduling and the idea. Students will have equal access, and I can't quite see it, Donna, but you may, if you can shrink it or move it to the left a little bit, that would be great. I don't. I don't know, but no, I can only see about half of each of those sentences, the numbers, the bullets. That's pretty good, I'll just hold the screen closer. So it says, students will have access to all the classes in either model. Some things that will be different this year, and I know Donna touched on it a little bit. Last year, in the emergency remote, we were very flexible with things like grading and attendance and all of that stuff. And we've really listened to the feedback from families and teachers as we've tried to plan at the middle school. What is it that we need to do differently for this? And a lot, some of it is accountability for for students and parents. So things like attendance will be taken at the beginning of each class. Especially in the remote setting, obviously, if you're there in person, we can see you, but in a remote setting. All classes will be graded, teachers will utilize Google Classroom as their communication platform. Every student will be assigned an advisor as a family contact. So last year, there was a lot of frustration around, I'm having eight different teachers Skype into my house and trying, me trying to communicate with them on a regular basis as a parent or a student, and it was overwhelming. And now again, as part of the rationale behind having only the allied arts group on the remote days for the in-person people as well. And the advisor becomes that contact person, where if you're not understanding something, if things are not going really well, it's just another layer, because I know our teachers were feeling last year. It's very challenging to try to have a Zoom or a Google meeting with twenty-five students. You can't see them all on your screen, it's hard to give them all your attention and your time. And it was really hard to make sure they weren't falling through the cracks. So one kind of level, you know, a a net under that is the addition of an advisory program where the advisors will be checking in and and we have a whole nother plan working on what is the role of an advisor in that. So that's coming out later. But that made the teachers feel really good because now they're really focusing on about ten kids not falling through the cracks, not thirty-five. And every student has somebody advocating for them in there, and a parent has a contact. So that is new and we're pretty excited about that. Attendance and grades will be tracked in Power School. Remote lessons will consist of live and guided practice. So it could be some synchronous and some asynchronous types of learning going on. And then all students will have access to social emotional support. Again, it's really important to us that no matter what method or model you choose, you have have equal access to all of these things. All students will be able to participate in clubs, activities or sports that are offered. So I have no idea what's going to be offered, but in the event that it was, it's really important that we're not, again, incentivizing someone to make a choice, oh, I need to send my kid to school if they want to play this sport. That that can't be a part of this equation, in my opinion, I think it needs to be equitable. And then video conferencing this year will be via Zoom. And the highlight really is the only difference between the hybrid remote and the hybrid in-person is the location that you'll be receiving your instruction. So that has been our focus and our goal all along. It's also to limit the, really focus on pod sizes. It's pretty amazing, I walked through the school through the day with Jill Young, our nurse, and just trying to figure out how wide are our hallways? Does this need to be a one-way traffic hallway? And if it is, how do we do that in a way that allows the traffic flow to even happen in the building? So there are so many logistics, it's really important that we keep our pods of students small. And most cases, for example, on these schedules, fifth, sixth, maybe most seventh and eighth graders would have the same math and science teacher, so it would be one person. Language arts and social studies would be one person, and world language would be one person. So right there, they only have three interactions with teachers on those days. There are some outliers there of having math off-team. If if I'm in sixth grade and I need a algebra class, it's not obviously offered in sixth grade. So that student would have to either, maybe we'll try to remotely get it to that student. So it would stop them from walking and going into joining another class, or they would have to join that other class. So those would be the only situations really that we could see students having more than three teachers in a day. So that is, I think we feel really successful with that. And then lastly, we believe that if we were to go red, full remote for everyone, we would go with the same schedule. And the potting is equally important if students are at home because the teachers, I think, are less effective working with twenty-five kids remotely than they would be groups of fifteen or twelve, it's really going to be twelve. So our our pod sizes are twelve people in a room, counting the teacher. And that kind of is the mathematical form of, you know, according to the space that we can have in a room at a time, it's about eleven students and one adult. We can get that much into our rooms, moving some stuff out. So even our goal was create a schedule that we can keep for the long haul that can fluctuate between hybrid remote or full remote and noto and still honor all the concerns that parents had last year with with our remote learning and kind of meet our teachers' needs as well at the same time. So that really is our goal, we have curriculum groups working, Kathy's working with one of them, you know, she's helping us with that. But really, it's about identifying, as Jason said, scope and sequence. You know, what are we teaching in the first month, first month? What skills are the important ones that we're going to prioritize? How are we doing that? So that's happening. We do have a remote learning committee that is meeting, working on setting really some training, and and I think some of the really important parts for us are going to be the ability to have the roll-in two weeks. So in my mind, we would have something like fifth and seventh graders come. So one day would be fifth grade and seventh grade maroon, the next day would be fifth and seventh gold, the next time we met would be five, seven maroon, five, seven gold. So they would have a lot of time in there to learn, how are we entering the building? Because we're using five different entrances this year to separate kids. What are the protocols that we have to go through for safe, health and safety? How are we going to get our lunch? What are we doing with all these things? That really is the value of the roll-in and then kind of a tech boot camp mixed in with that. Because every student in the hybrid model is going to have to do some level of remote learning at the same time. So we need to make sure that we really give them the appropriate training beforehand and front-loading as to how do I log on to Power School? How do I attach some things to Zoom? You know, how do I manage my Google Classrooms? And and really teaching those skills to them is the purpose of that first two-week kind of the slower roll-in and really give our all of our systems kind of a stress test at a smaller level. You know, how's busing going to go? How is the entrance, how's the entrance working? What are the trips to the nurse's office and all of these types of things? We just want to put it in a smaller group and a smaller setting and make our kids feel really comfortable with that. And then also, anyone that is choosing remote, I think it's really important, we offer, not everybody has to choose to take up us on the offer, but a day, and it would probably be that Wednesdays of the roll-in, is what I'm thinking, where they could come in and meet some of the teachers, they're going to have to put the devices anyways and really get some of that techie kind of boot camp stuff for themselves as well, just to kind of front-load their remote learning experience. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, what we have planned out. And it's about access, safety, potting and and all of that. So I hope that's relatively clear enough for you. And I, and we do have our students broken down into maroon and gold already. However, as Donna said, depending on the survey, what if one classroom that's scheduled to have twelve people in it, all of a sudden has nine that are going to choose the remote option? We need to do some reshuffling. So we're not quite ready to share that yet for that reason. So any questions?
Heather, you're muted.
That's what you just said to me, huh, Elizabeth, that I was muted, thank you. Just a reminder, this is for the board to be asking questions, this time is not for community members to ask, and I do see that Hope Straw has her, Hope has her hand raised, so go ahead, Hope.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So Troy, thank you very much, that was very helpful. I have a couple of questions you, which you may have answered, but I just want to sort of crystallize it. It sounds like we've sort of created this model where yellow, we could go from yellow to red, and it really, all it, all that means is the the kids who are going in person go all remote. But the kids who had chosen, opted out would just continue as as typical, so.
Yes, absolutely, that was our goal, was to have the least disruption in this turbulent time of not knowing what's coming next. So that we cannot have to restart, reshuffle, change things very much.
And then, so you mentioned that the, if you're choosing all remote and you're you're on your instruction day, you'd have a, you'd have some live and some asynchronous instruction. I didn't catch, would it be the same teacher for those students?
Yeah, so in a perfect, awesome world, we would just video every classroom and send it out. We are not there at the middle school with our tech ability, or I think even our our professional development, to expect that to happen. So no, at first, it would become its own remote learning team of teachers, and they would only be teaching remotely. So I think, and my expectation would be in that situation, they would develop that skill set maybe quicker because that that would be their primary focus. So I want to hesitate of saying, yes, it would be live instruction, but that would be the goal of doing it, and that's kind of the, as we start to decide how many teachers we need and which teachers, some teachers prefer the same thing, they also would prefer to be remote. So where possible, if I could match them up, that would be great for everyone. But I'm not naive enough to believe that that's going to work out well. So we have some identified people already that would be providing this this instruction. And depending on how many kids and families request remote, that we may do a five, seven remote team, a seven, eight, we may do, you know, multiple groups at every, at a grade level. So it's really dependent upon that survey that we're going to get back.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other comments or questions from board members? I'm not seeing any hands, so if there are, you can speak up. But in the spirit of keeping things moving, thank you very much for that, Troy. Let's move to our high school principal, Jeff Shad.
Hi, good evening, thanks for the opportunity. Donna or Jen, if you could make me a co-host, I'm not going to share anything yet, but I will be in in a little bit. So. Okay, thank you. So you'll be hearing, as I sort of go through what high school is planning on for our fall instruction, hearing some common threads between what, with what Jason and Troy have said about Pond Cove and the middle school. You'll also hear some differences that really don't reflect any philosophical differences, it's just the realities that at high school teaching assignment is more by experience and certification and training and specialty and that sort of thing. So it's not, the the experience will have common threads, but it won't be exactly the same. So I want to talk about three things, and one is the work of the Fall Planning Committee for the high school with an emphasis, as Jason and Troy did, talking about the schedule and what that would look like. I want to talk about physical spacing issues, and then I want to conclude. And then I want to conclude with some comments about instruction, and particularly what instruction could look like for students who are at home, either on the off, on the days when they're not in school, if they're participating in the hybrid model, if that's what we choose to do, or if they're home because they've opted for 100% remote learning. So that's sort of my game plan about what I'd like to cover. And first, I would just like to thank the members of the Fall Planning Committee. We've met either six or seven times so far, and I expect we're going to be meeting at least three times more between now and the beginning of school. And I just wanted to quickly rattle off their names if the board would indulge me. Andrew Lupien, Kathy Bach, Liz Yerington, these are all teachers. Karen Jenkins, our school nurse. Ted Jordan, a teacher, social worker, Joyce Nato, Christine Marshall, A.G. Gillis, who's one of our special education ed techs. David Peery, and then Nate Carpenter, the assistant principal. So we've talked about quite a few issues on the team. We started talking about bottleneck issues, which led to some interesting discussions of how to sort of minimize the likelihood of bottlenecks. I'm not going to address that tonight. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer it. We've talked a little bit about ventilation. I know Perry's going to talk about that today. At our last meeting, we started talking about study halls and lunches and what those would look like in the fall. But without any question, the biggest topic that we've talked about is the schedule. And over the course of all the meetings that we had, I think we developed about seven different alternative schedules that we could possibly use. And then after sort of generating a lot of great ideas, we took one meeting and we sat back and we said, what are the criteria that we're going to use to judge what the best schedule is for particularly a hybrid model? But really, for the fall, given the fact that the fall could look like any number of different things, and it could look like one thing on one week and something else two weeks later. So we ended up generating a list of about 12 possible criteria, and then prioritizing those criteria. And the non-negotiables I will start with, in terms of any schedule that we dealt with, that we accepted, that we needed to work with, is number one, compatibility with PaaS. Because PaaS is planning to be open this fall. To the extent the Portland school system is open at all, they plan to have kids in smaller groups come to PaaS and benefit from what they have to offer. And the second thing really is, and this applies to grouping primarily, is working together with Poncove in the middle school to make sure that we're staying in sync and being sensitive to the needs of families who have students in different schools. So after a discussion, we prioritize the, sort of the non-negotiables as the number one, far and away, top thing. And it sounds very trite to say it, but it really, the realization really drove a lot of thinking and changed a lot of thinking, and that was health and safety. And not that, we weren't mindful of that before, but sort of going through the process that led us to say, that's the number one thing, really did open up some eyes to some really sort of different ways to think about our school schedule. And that really, those health and safety issues meant trying to minimize transitions as much as possible, and trying to minimize the number of students who pass through any given space in the high school for any particular sequence of time, period of time. So that was by far number one, and that definitely drove the schedule that I'm going to share with you in a couple of minutes. The other one, and Troy mentioned this as well, is that whatever schedule we adopt, knowing that this could be a very interesting year with some interesting transitions, is adaptable to any model, whether we're hybrid, whether we're remote, whether you're 100% remote, or whether we're all-in-school. We wanted to have a schedule that would have the advantage of being able to easily be able to adapt to any one of those modes. And a related criteria, which was, I think, the third top criteria, is that a schedule that would be simple and manageable for both students and staff. And that really tied it nicely with some of the health and safety concerns as well. And so, oh, and the last one that I'll mention, I think it was right up there, was a schedule that would be conducive to building effective relationships with kids. One of the things that I'm sure teachers in all three buildings are concerned about is that we did have the advantage during the remote learning in the spring is that our teachers already had established relationships with students. That's not going to be true when we start up in the fall, except coincidentally, if a teacher happens to have a repeat student, and that will happen in some cases, but it will not be true in the majority of cases. So that led to some interesting conversations about what kind of schedule is most conducive to developing meaningful relationships with kids in the limited, in a smaller amount of time than you would have with less frequency of contact than you would have if we started the school entirely in-person. So now I will, so the schedule that we have come up with, it's not 100% finalized. There's one big part of it that's to be determined, but it's going to be determined within the next day or two, I would say, is what we've come to refer to as an alternating mini-term shortened block schedule. I'm going to say that again, an alternating mini-term shortened block schedule. It's a lot of words, but it's a fairly simple concept. And let me see if I can get it up. Here's screen, there it is. It's not allowing me to share, Donna.
Oh.
It should, you're a co-host.
Did you go down to the green share screen? And then you have to share it, you have to press share again once you pull it up.
That's what I do, and it's.
It's over in the lower right-hand corner, then, the second.
Make sure that the screen that your desktop is highlighted.
Yep, it is, and I've pressed share again, and it says I have to open system preferences.
Interesting. I wonder, let me make some of the, it's interesting.
I could, I could send this, I could share this with you, Donna, if you want to.
Why don't you share it with Jen? She can do it faster.
I will share it with Jen. Hold on a second.
Are you going to email it to me real quick, or?
That's what we're going to do, Jen, thank you.
Yeah, I can do that.
How's it going, Jen? I just, I just keep hitting refresh.
I haven't gotten it to you, Jen.
Okay, okay.
It's not, it's not on you, it's on me.
I keep hitting mute because my dog is barking upstairs with my child, so.
All right, I'm going to, I guess I'll share it from Excel.
Is it worth?
Not even allowed to attach a file right now, I'm really confused.
Is it worth moving on to our business manager? For the sake of time, and coming back to you, Jeff?
That's perfectly fine with me, Heather. If I can't figure out an amount of time, I'm in the wrong business.
Jen, here's a quick question. Do you think you can, am I able to share my screen?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay, all right, here we go. I think we're good. Okay, so my screen should be up. I just wanted to highlight our new funding sources that are on all of our minds right now in our district. The first timeline we have here is our new CRF coronavirus relief fund. And that's this one right here. We were just awarded the $1,052,760.36 exactly. And the trick with this funding source is that all funds must be encumbered by September 30th, and we have until December 30th of this year to spend the money. So that's the first set of funding we have. The second set, we have this little amount, CARES ESRF, Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund money of $23,098.80. And we have until September of 2022 to spend these funds. I don't think we'll have any problem with that this year. So the administrative team has been putting together data for this funding application of the $1 million that would suit both the hybrid and the distance learning needs. And we are, we have until the end of this month to submit the application. The money has been approved, so now they just want to see our plan. And then we will have reimbursed, it'd be like a reimbursable type funding source. So I just wanted to highlight that, and that's all I have. Donna, unless you want me to touch on anything else?
No, I think we're all set.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you, Marcy.
Welcome.
Jeff, do you think you're ready to go back? Or should we see Kathy Stankert? She has to present.
Why don't we hear from Kathy?
Okay. Our Director of Teaching and Learning, Kathy Stankert. Kathy, are you there?
I see her.
Here, and she's not muted. She's a co-host.
Kathy, are you? We can't hear you.
Kathy? You're shaking your head, it's not working. For you to unmute. It's not working. Okay, Jen, are you able to unmute? Kathy?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I mean, I can unmute her. I just did.
But she's talking and we can't hear her.
Does she have her buds in? Sometimes her buds do weird things.
I know, the air buds do weird things, no. So here's something I've done. The volume on my computer, the microphone is way down. Have you checked to make sure it's on and up? Yes. I just read your lips. But I can't do that for the whole presentation. I don't know that skill.
Why don't we go on, and maybe she can work on that?
Yep. We'll move on to Delpea, our Director of Special Services.
All right, evening, everyone. I just want to do a brief overview, now that you've heard from the different schools, and what the hybrid model looks like for general education students. How would, what would it look like for our special education students? Can, are you hearing me all right, Heather?
Yes.
So essentially, our teachers, I mean, the other piece that I do need to mention at the beginning, as Troy said, we're still collecting numbers, names and numbers of students that will be going 100% remote. And, and as Donna mentioned earlier, we also have staff members that will be matched up to work remotely as well. But generally, so I'll speak in general terms that, in the sense that folks that would be in-person. So our special education teachers are going to be expected to flex in and out of in-person and remote learning throughout their days. They're going to set up their schedules with the students on their caseloads. And they may have to go, they may go from any given day where they're servicing two students, two or three students in-person, to possibly two students, one being on a non-cohort, and the other being 100% remote learning. So it's, again, this will set them up so that if we end up, you know, going to 100% remote learning, they're just going to carry that schedule right with them and follow it just the same way. It's just what format they're using to meet student needs. And of course, the student needs are all driven by the hours on their IEPs, or the individual education plans. And this would be the same for related services. Some related services are more difficult to do remotely and less effective. So we would, of course, try to get those done in-person, on in-person days with regard to the hybrid model. But we also have some staff that are part-time, so there may be a combination of in-person and hybrid for any particular student. Other things that I wanted to mention, IEP meetings, because of the six-foot social distancing for adults, and the fact that adult-to-adult transmission is the biggest concern at this moment, all of our IEP meetings would continue using a virtual format, Zoom. Testing, so as most of you know, a lot of special education is driven on standardized testing. Standardized tests, standardized tests are not standardized to be administered remotely. And so a lot of that was put on hold in the spring. We have had some testing done this summer, but we are still behind. So we will be working on that backlog as, as we progress into the fall. And that also will mean a lot of IEP meetings at all three schools. PPE, I just wanted to mention that outside of what Donna mentioned, that the state is providing us, I have ordered plexiglass barriers for our staff, because obviously, three adults are still supposed to be six feet from students. And to provide direct intervention, you will have to be closer than that. And if you've ever been in a resource room, watching a teacher work with a student, they are much closer than that. So we will need additional PPE so that we're actually in physical proximity so that we can be effective. And as well as also the Z shields for them. Z shields are just a little bit different than the head shields in that they go, they rest on your chest, they go around your neck and they rest on your chest, and they're much more comfortable, given that you may have to wear them all day long. I believe that the gowns are coming, some of the gowns will be coming with the state order. Donna, I'm not sure on that one, but that at times, like our speech therapists may need gowns. Folks that work in life skills may need gowns at times. I also wanted to mention that once we have students back in-person, that we will be doing progress monitoring or informal assessments to figure out where the students are at, with regard to all of the goal areas that are listed on their IEPs. The other piece is the social-emotional. So we pulled together a committee that meets for the first time next week. The committee consists of all the guidance counselors, social workers, the psychologists, and the behavior specialists. And so we'll be meeting to figure out what makes the most sense for our returning students. And they'll, those are, those are our experts in the field and we'll kind of leave that up. Kathy and I will both be on that committee to facilitate. I also wanted to mention that for those students that, based on the data that was collected in the spring, were unable to benefit in any meaningful way from the remote learning, that we will be doing our best to bring those students in, in person, on all in-person instructional days. And that'll be, that'll be decided on an individual student-by-student basis with the treatment teams at each school. And I think that's all I had to share, unless board members have questions.
Heather, can I just talk for one moment?
Yes, Jen.
Okay, sorry, I don't know why, but my, I couldn't raise my hand. I was just gonna comment, Del, on the gowns and all of the PPE through the main Department of Education through the state. The inventory has been slowly trickling in. I get email notifications when that happens. And I've been ordering accordingly, so, and they're on the list.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for that update. Any board members have questions? Okay. Thank you, Del. We're gonna go back to Jeff Shad. I hear that he's ready.
I believe I am. I think at some point in the recent past, I must have clicked something in System Preferences that I, I should have pressed. So anyway, thank you, Jen, for helping me out with this. So this is, I mentioned a CEHS alternating mini-term schedule for 2020 to 21. And this is essentially what it looks like. And the comment, so basically what it would be is that we envision having half of our classes meet over what we are calling a mini-term of either four weeks or eight weeks. So that let's, I'm, I think that the likelihood is we're going to end up at four weeks. So that for four weeks, our students would take periods, the classes that they have during periods 1, 4, 7, and 8. We think that the advantages of that, and then the next four weeks, they would take the other classes, 2, 3, 5, 6, and then they would continue alternating this way as long as we, for as long as they need to, based on what the guidelines are and what COVID-19 is doing and that sort of thing. It's, it's a schedule that we feel comfortable, we could easily adapt to completely remote learning, and we could also easily adapt and continue in completely in-person learning. So that is basically the concept. The advantages that we see that it has are a couple-fold. And the first one is health and safety. We are concerned about minimizing the number of students who will be passing through the classrooms, both for the sake of the students and for the sake of the teachers. And so this would essentially cut in half the number of students who are going to a particular classroom for any sort of stretch, significant stretch of time. It also, we think, is, although there is some difference of opinion, but I think the consensus is, and certainly the Fall Planning Committee members felt that, it's a stronger schedule for us in terms of building relationships because every student will be in school, meeting with their, let's say, English teacher twice a week. If we were to try to create a schedule where kids were meeting with all of their eight-period classes and all of their eight teachers, then it would mean they would only be meeting in person, live in class, once per week. So we think this is a lot more conducive to, to building relationships as well, since we'll be starting off the year without those relationships. There are other advantages as well for both students and teachers. And for students particularly, if we all of a sudden were to scoot into remote learning, the advantage of this is that students would not need to be having to manage all of their high school classes at once. They would be able to focus on a smaller number of classes for a more, in a more intensive way over a more extended period of time. There are two, two sort of issues with, with this system. And one is that there will be, each time a new mini-term begins, there'll be a sort of getting caught up back to where students were when last they were with that particular teacher. But we actually think that, but, but that on the other side, students, because they're able to focus on fewer classes, should be able to master in more depth and have more experience practicing. So hopefully retention will be greater. We're also thinking about if there's a way during the four weeks that a class is essentially off, whether periodically during those four weeks, there can be some limited occasions of contact between the teacher and the student. The other problem that needs to be resolved is, is in the realm of special education, just to make sure that we can coordinate this with the needs of the students under IEPs who are, who are entitled to get a certain number of minutes of support over given periods of time. But actually, the special educators in the building, special education teachers have been pretty strong that they think that this model actually is better for most of their kids, precisely because it allows them to focus on fewer things at once. They don't have to juggle quite as much. And, and they believe, and you'll notice also that the end of each day, similar to, I think, what Troy showed for the middle school, the last hour of each day is an office hour, student work and support time, which is time when either remote or in-person students can get connection with teachers. And then Friday is, and Wednesday as well, the entire morning is a time when students can get remote support from teachers. Again, both students who are participating in hybrid learning and students who are participating strictly at home. So that is another opportunity to provide support for students. So this is a little bit of a different schedule. And when we first started talking about it, it seemed so untraditional that it seemed like it couldn't possibly be a good idea. But as we processed it more and more and more, we think, we were, we were pretty confident that the advantages of this significantly outweigh the disadvantages, and particularly when it comes to health and safety, primarily because of that issue of reducing the number of times, number of students who are going through any given classroom space over any sequence of time. It also reduces the number of transition times that we have for students as well, because the classes are longer than they would be even in our regular school schedule. This provides for hour-long classes, which is, which is longer than we normally have. So that's the schedule. I'm sure there may be questions, particularly since it's the first time you, people have seen it. Administrators have heard about it, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I did want to talk about physical spacing a little bit within the classrooms. So the typical high school classroom has between 750 and 850 square feet. There are some that are a little bit more. But that's the typical high school classroom. Based on even social distancing guidelines of six feet, that amount of square footage should be, give us the opportunity to have 10 to 12 people in a classroom at one time. And this obviously assumes different classes have tables, science classes have lab tables. So it is more complex. Not every classroom is the generic sort of classroom with some, with some, with some teacher's desk and, and bookcases and chelving and that sort of thing. But, but in general, that's the size. So I'll throw some data at you that's very familiar to me right now because it's what I've been working on for the last few days, which has to do with the maroon gold division of students within the high school, which is now done. So there are essentially 253 regular education classes that will be meeting during the first semester of our fall semester. Some of those are year-long classes, a good number are, some of those are first semester classes. So there are 253 gold groups of students and 253 maroon groups of students. 90.5% of the maroon groups are less than or equal to 10 students. 89% of the gold groups are less than or equal to 10 students. So we feel, then, there are a few classes that no matter how much you want to do it, they are, they are just large classes. So we do anticipate there may need, there will need to be some classes that are taught in more creatively used spaces. I think Donna alluded to this earlier in her remarks, the cafeteria, the auditorium, possibly the achievement center, possibly the robotics room, if we have to use that room. So there are spaces we anticipate where sometimes teachers will be teaching in spaces other than their regular classroom settings in the interest of sort of physical distancing and the health and safety of students and staff. So I want to talk about instruction. That's sort of the physical distancing, the physical environment of the classes. In terms of instruction, we will have a certain number of teachers who are remote, 100% remote teachers, based on their, based on their own situation. We will have a certain number of students who are 100% remote learners, just as with the other principals of other schools. I don't have final numbers of either yet. They are coming in. But I will say, unlike the other two schools, in high school, teachers tend to be more content specialists. And they, they're, what they are able to teach is limited by their certification. So it, so we do not, and I, it's just really, given that reality, not feasible to set up a certain group of teachers and say they are going to teach the wide array of classes that students who are being taught 100% remote would, would want to access and have the, and have the right to access. So we're not going to try to do that because it's just, it's just not going to work. So, so families who elect to have their students taught 100% remotely at home, those students will be the part, part of their regular classes. They will have the regularly assigned teachers. The only difference is they will not be coming into the building. They will be accessing those classes from home remotely. So, so that is really one of the knowns that we absolutely have. The other known, so is that all kids will be in their regularly scheduled classes with their regularly scheduled teachers, regardless of whether they're 100% accessing things remotely or they're accessing some things in class and some things remotely. The other thing that is unknown is that all students will have live contact and instruction from teachers. That, that is absolutely a known that that will take place. The, the $100,000 question is whether or not we can pull off having teachers concurrently teaching students, half of whom are in class and half of whom, and maybe a little bit more, are at home remotely. One of the huge, and because it would be ideal if it could work. Two months ago, I thought it would, I'm, I'm surprised I'm even saying that I think it's something that we need to explore. And I think it's something that's worth exploring. There are models out there for doing that sort of concurrent hybrid, concurrent in-person and remote teaching. They are challenging. They would require training. They have some technological questions that we need to answer. And one of the great advantages of having the second week of professional development for teachers before school begins, so not starting students in school until the eighth, and then having those two weeks for a sort of working time as we orient and train students and continue to orient and train teachers, is we can try out some of these things. At the very least, students, teachers will be able to record classes, post the classes so that students at home can access them. And they would be also having opportunities to live connect with their teachers to get support. At the very least, that will happen. If we can pull off concurrent live teaching of students in class and remotely, we are going to make our best efforts to do that as well. But we have some questions that we have to answer. So I don't want to promise that we can pull it off. But I, but I, I think we will invest time and energy to see if we can make it work, particularly for the benefit of those students who are going to be 100% remote. We really have to tackle it and make every effort to see if we can do that. And I think that, I think that that is all, unless there are any questions, and I'm sure that there are.
I did see that Nassar had his hand up a little while ago. Nassar, if you still have a question?
Yeah. Hi, Jeff. I like your schedule and it's a little easier for me to follow. But I have to say that your naming is a little difficult to see or to follow. The naming and the title, mini, 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 something.
Oh, okay. Sorry, we'll work on that.
All right, great. This schedule looks great. And then my question is, do individuals have choice? Like if I show this to my son, Hamza, he's gonna, he's gonna say, oh, I want to be in the gold group because this way he's got a four-day weekend. And my work, that I work in the city of Portland, we had a furlong day, and it was something similar. So one week I'll get Thursday off, the other week I'll get Friday off. So we can equally get a chance of having the long, long day weekend. So the question is, is this a choice by students or first come serve? Or how is this going to be worked out?
So, so I, I think if you ask Jason and Troy the same question, they would all tell you the same thing. There will not be any choice. There just, there just can't be because we have to have roughly equal numbers of students in, overall, in the cohorts, Nassar. And within each class, we have to have as, as close to an even balance of between gold and maroon as we possibly can. And on top of that, there are many families, I think there's about 150 families of students in the high school who also have students in the middle school or Pond Cove. So, so we are assigning those at all, at all three schools, Nassar. There will not be choice about that, no.
Elizabeth?
Thank you, and thank you, Jeff. To, I have my own questions, but just to follow up a little bit on what Nassar said. If you are in the gold group, my understanding is that Friday would not be a day off anyway. Am I correct that you would be expected to learn on Friday as well?
There are, there are five days of school. And definitely Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday are, are complete school days. It's just a question of how you're accessing school, not whether you're accessing school. And even Wednesday morning in particular, there will be a lot of contacts between teachers and students as well. So, yeah, this is a five-day schedule.
Yeah, that was my understanding. So my question for the days that a student might be accessing school from home, it's their home day. Well, have you worked out quite yet that there will be, you know, there's a lot of talk of synchronous and asynchronous to me, that means Zoom meetings versus videos. So will there be Zoom meetings or video, like how, how is that supposed to work at the high school? Because it, there was definitely a great disparity in how teachers interacted with students last spring. And I was hoping for some norms and expectations that if, you know, on remote days, whether during a hybrid situation or in a 100% situation, that there would be a, a higher level of Zoom interactions where there was actual teaching content.
So if you're in, let's say, for example, Elizabeth, if you're in the maroon group and you're at home on Tuesdays, and I, and I tried to explain this, but one of two things is going to happen. One is because teachers are going to be teaching their classes in school. So they, so either students will be accessing some learning asynchronously, which the teachers would be, would be providing on those days. Or my hope is that we can work out the, the issues associated with actually having this, the remote, the students who are at home access the live instruction in the classroom. Again, I, I'm not promising that. But that is the hope if we, if we can, can pull that off. And there are definitely some models that allow you to do that without super sophisticated technology, really with Zoom, essentially. technology, really with Zoom essentially, but there are questions about bandwidth and there are other questions about other aspects of just getting, having, helping teachers, including sort of get used, think differently about what classes can look like essentially. I do think that Zoom, that the decision to go to Zoom as opposed to meet has the potential to be very beneficial in terms of this direction because Zoom does have the ability to do breakout rooms. And it is not impossible to have breakout rooms that include students who are, some of whom are in the classroom and some of whom are at home. Or breakout rooms that are either kids in the classroom or kids, kids at various locations at home remotely, but essentially doing exactly the same thing.
Thanks, and I, I know you did touch on it and I just kind of wanted to highlight it a little bit and I appreciate you going into a little bit more depth. And please don't take this the wrong way. I'm, I'm going to ask some challenging things and it is completely with respect, but how can we possibly deliver the appropriate amount of content with appropriate instruction with essentially, we're taking half the school year away from the students in this scenario of mini terms. If someone is taking pre-calculus for four weeks and then, and they're going from 50-minute periods to 60-minute periods, which is great, but it's a 10-minute increase and only twice a week in the school day, so for four weeks, and then you have four weeks off from pre-calculus. I, it's, there's, that's half the time that you're able to deliver instruction. And I guess my concern is around, you know, we've got, you've got AP classes and exams that don't have, you know, modified content that we know of. There was modified, you know, content and expectations for last year, but we haven't heard anything about that this year and I don't imagine they will. But even still, our, our, our standards aren't aligned to AP classes. It, it just looks like that we've got stripped down to half as far as what kind of access and content we can deliver? Or are we going to be asking the students to double the amount of time that they teach themselves?
So I would say that you're asking an excellent question, but I'm not sure it's one, I, I don't think it's unique to a mini-term model. I think we'd have the same question if we were to try to teach all eight classes at once. Because essentially it, it's just a different reorganization of the time because if we did try to teach all eight classes at once, then students would have half the opportunities to be in school with teachers that they would under this model. So it really, it's not so much the mini-term model that is, that is, it, it's, it's really that we're in a hybrid situation. If, now I will say that the periods in this model are longer than the periods in our regular school situation. The other issue is, and again, it's, it's that we have taken Wednesday and we've made it not a regular class instruction day. So you're starting off with 20% less to begin with time to work with kids. Because the purpose of Wednesday is to provide support to students who need additional support, but it's not necessarily new instruction. Under any model, and I, I, I think the teacher, I know that, I'm quite confident that teachers who are on the fall planning committee would, who've discussed this at length, under any model, we are, we are getting a big hit in terms of instructional time unless it gets minimized if we can pull off the ability to teach students live and in class simultaneously. Then, then, because then actually if we can do that, then teach, students would actually be getting class four out of five days, which is 80% of the days that classes meet as opposed to 75% under our normal school schedule. And their classes would actually be longer than they are under the normal school schedule. It is still less total time, but that's not really a function of a mini-term approach. The mini-term approach is just a way to, to divide the time a little bit differently in the interest of health and safety and, and building relationships.
I see what you're saying and I agree with that. And I think that you made that really clear. And I think what we all need to be really clear about is going back to school this way, we are taking a hit in instruction. There's no way we're going to cover the amount of content that we traditionally hold ourselves to in our high standards. And it, so I see what you're saying and I agree, but I still see that no matter how we slice and dice this in a hybrid model, we're not going to have what we are, our usual high standards.
That's right. That, that is inevitable and I, and I, and I think if you, I believe if you ask Troy and Jason, they would say the same thing. That you just don't have as much time with students. And again, yeah, you just don't have that much time. And there, there are definitely trade-offs to doing things as safely as we can in lousy circumstances.
Thank you.
Sure.
I hope you had had your hand raised, but I don't see you anymore. Do you still have a question?
I'm all set. Elizabeth asked the question I had, thank you.
Okay, I thought that might have been the case, but I wanted to double check. Anybody else? On the board, okay. Kimberly.
Hello. I, I appreciate your creativity, Jeff, with this and your, your team. Great job thinking out of the box. And I'm just wondering, do you envision, so you know, you were just speaking to that we would take a hit academically with, with this model. Do you envision that we would take a similar hit if we were to go 100% remote or? I don't know, what are your thoughts on that?
You would, you would definitely still take it, well, it's in part, it depends what you do with the fifth day. Do, do you have a fifth day which is strictly for support? Because if you start off, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I think having the fifth day makes perfect sense, particularly as we're trying to get used to yet again, a new, a new situation. And there's no question that teachers have a lot to learn and that's going to take a lot of time. So I'm, I'm not saying it's a bad, but the, the reality is once you take 20% out for new instruction, then, then there is a hit. We have also, at least the, the high school and middle school at least, I was, are also have built in some time for support for students. And that's a, a chunk of time as well out of the schedule. And I think given the, the experience that we had with the all remote learning experience, I think it is, again, a, a good use of time, a smart use of time. But it's not a way that we would necessarily structure time if everybody was in school. But I think it would be important to have something like that if we were all remote, Kimberly. So there are some sort of things unless, unless, unless you try to just go into remote learning and try to replicate exactly the schedules that you have or close to them that you have in a regular instruction time. And we did try that for the first week of remote instruction and just about, just about destroyed the students and the teachers, I would say. So we did have to step back. I think the teachers have learned a lot. So, but still there are some certain challenges that come with teaching remotely and learning remotely that are just not the same as being in person in class. And that is a reality. And I think we're all trying to do the best we can. I hope that answers your question, Kimberly.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think, you know, we, we all experienced the spring, but you know, so I think the reality is that we take unfortunately some type of an academic hit regardless of the platform we move forward with, you know, given the pandemic that we're in.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Kimberly and Jeff. Let's move on, Kathy Stankert.
Let's hope, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
You know, what I was saying when you couldn't hear me was how glad I was that I wasn't going to be, that I wasn't going to be screen sharing given the issues Jeff was having and then my volume goes, but anyway. So yes, Kathy Stanker, Director of Teaching and Learning, I want to address four questions tonight. The first question is how have educators been preparing to teach more effectively in a hybrid or remote learning environment? The second is what resources are we utilizing to support effective instruction in a hybrid or remote learning environment? The third is what professional development have we planned to support effective instruction in a hybrid or remote learning environment? And finally, how will we support our English language learners and students identified as gifted and talented in either a hybrid or a remote learning environment? So. The first question then is about teachers, how they are preparing for return to school. And I think it's worth remembering that teachers went home on March 13th thinking they were coming back to school on March 16th. Business as usual, and so they had almost no time to prepare. And that is not the situation we, in which we find ourselves now. So one way that they've been preparing is through summer work projects. We approved 47 summer work projects involving 96 teachers, that is 69% of our faculty. The projects range in duration from three to 15 hours and all of them are concerned with improving instruction in a remote learning or hybrid learning environment. And that's either, I mean, they range, but some are concerned with increasing technological expertise. So for example, Google Classroom, EdPuzzle, Flipgrid, et cetera. Collaborating on essential knowledge and skills with teachers at the same, at the same grade level and the same course that's been alluded to tonight. Finding additional resources that are appropriate for remote learning, figuring out how to teach remotely those hands-on lessons that are normally done in person, like a science lab or an art lesson. Or developing new ways of supporting students if we're in person. I think the advisory at, at the middle school is a good example of that. In addition, teachers have been participating in summer webinars and conferences. These have all been held remotely, obviously. Teachers College offered professional development in phonics units of study. And so a number of our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers participated in those. There was also a workshop entitled Reimagining Education, which actually looked at issues of equity in a, in part looked at issues of equity in a, in a remote learning environment or hybrid learning environment. We have had access to a database of webinars called Simple K-12. And a number of our teachers have participated in this. There are literally hundreds of 30-minute webinars on technology like, you know, how to use iPads, video conferencing, Google Classroom, but also on how you engage the remote learning, the remote learner, how you develop a synchronous lesson and asynchronous lesson, et cetera. And then we've also had teachers participating in webinars sponsored by an organization called the Bureau of Educational Research. So for example, a couple of our world languages teachers participate in a day-long workshop on distance learning for world language teachers. So. So in addition to summer work projects and the summer webinars and conferences, we also, and this has been, already been talked about, so I'll move quickly through it, we've had teachers, teams of teachers in each school working on identifying the essential knowledge and skills so that we can guarantee a consistent curricular experience that is feasible in a hybrid or remote learning environment. We've established the fact that we are not going to be covering 100% of what we would normally do. So we're identifying that which we believe to be the most essential and that, and, and it will be offered in a, in a consistent way with students being held to the same expectations if they're in the same course at the same grade level. And those are the learning targets that will guide our assessment and our grading. And there was a question asked about whether all levels of required courses and all electives would continue to be offered. I think this was primarily about the high school and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, as far as I know, that is, that is the case.
It is the case.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so the second question is then what you, resources are we utilizing to support effective instruction? So as has been said, we have agreed as a district that we will all be using the same instructional platform, Google Classroom. And that's true, that, that is how instruction will be delivered K through 12. This will provide consistency across the grade levels and courses and it will improve ease of use. We are planning to train students when they return to school in those rollout days and we're also going to be offering families training in Google Classroom. And then again, as has been mentioned, we have selected Zoom as our video conferencing platform. There were a group of teachers who volunteered to meet last week to discuss the pros and cons of Google Meet, both as it is currently and what we anticipate it will be because there, there is talk of additional features being added and, and Zoom. And after reviewing all of the features, this committee unanimously recommended that the district adopt Zoom as its video conferencing platform. The district administrative team has adopted this recommendation as you know. So Zoom will be used for all synchronous instruction, K-12, and, and for all meetings. And some of the most compelling features were the fact of the waiting room, that you have an unlimited gallery view, superior image and sound quality, the hand raising feature, the ability to put students in breakout rooms and bring them back, dual monitor capability and digital annotation tools. And again, we will be training students in, in use of Zoom when they, when they return to school. And then finally instructional resources, we've already had iXL for students in grades three through 12. And that will continue, but we're expanding it to include science and social studies and Spanish. At Pon Cove, we have the digital platform for everyday math available and mystery science. We're also in the process of securing Teachers Pay Teachers, which is a wonderful resource for teachers, literally thousands of lessons available and also Dreambox Math, which I won't go into now because I realize we're running out of time, but I, I would like at some point to talk in more detail about some of these additional programs that we're adding. At the middle school, we have a digital platform available for Glencoe Math and STEM Scopes, which is the way that we deliver our science curriculum and again, something that can be done entirely online. We're also, as I mentioned, in the process of securing Teachers Pay Teachers for those teachers as well and also Newsela, which is curated and differentiated contact in, content in ELA Science and Social Studies. And then at the high school, we've got Newsela, which I've just mentioned, EdPuzzle, and then tools for teaching AP courses in a hybrid or remote learning environment. So Google Classroom, Zoom, and then all of the instructional resources I just mentioned. Third question, what professional development have we planned to support effective instruction in a hybrid or remote learning environment? So first of all, the tech integrators in each school have this summer or will in the first two weeks of school be training teachers in Google Classroom and Zoom and then assisting with the implementation of other grade level or course, course or school-specific digital tools. The nurses will be training teachers in health and safety protocols. The school, as Dell mentioned, the school counselors, social workers, psychologists and our BCBA will be providing professional development on trauma-informed instruction and social emotional learning, as this topic will be an important part of students' return to school. And then finally, other professional development that we've scheduled, this all involves outside coaches and experts taking, the PD will be taking place on Zoom and it will be focusing on hybrid or remote teaching in, in a hybrid or remote learning environment. So we're planning to work with the local chapter of Dale Carnegie on engaging students online. We have a literacy coach providing PD in the TC Phonics Units of Study as well as on, that would be for teachers of kindergarten, first and second grade. And then another coach working with ELA teachers in grades three through eight on discourse. Discourse is different in a remote learning environment or a hybrid learning environment, so we will, I'm going to take advantage of her expertise. We have a coach coming in to work with teachers on the digital platform of everyday math and then another trainer coming in to work with the middle school science teachers on, on STEM Scopes. And then finally, how we support our English language learners and students identified as gifted and talented. And then finally, how will we support our English language learners and students identified as gifted and talented? So for English language learners, currently we have a full-time teacher for nineteen students. An additional nine students will have to be screened. We've received guidance from the main DOE that the screening can take place in person or remotely. So we will be able to fulfill our, our, our legal and moral obligation to those students. We have hired a half-time ELL ed tech. We'll be meeting with small groups of students, primarily at the middle and high school, either in person or online, depending on the model that we adopt, primarily to support their learning in content-based courses. And then finally, gifted and talented. So you know that the screening and identification process for rising fourth graders had to be suspended last year. But if we are in a hybrid learning environment, that, that process will go forward in September for those students. If we are in a hundred percent remote learning environment, then we will, we're, we haven't, we're still figuring that out. Students who have been identified for GT services in grades five through eight are going to receive them, whether we are in a hybrid learning environment or a remote learning environment, in accordance with the schedule that's being, that developed at the middle school that you saw presented tonight. So I realize I just raced through a lot of information and have to take questions now and, and also in, you know, follow-up emails or phone calls.
Thank you so much, Kathy. Are there any questions from the board? Kimberly.
Hello, Kathy. Thank you for that very thorough update. It sounds like you guys have been working hard with lots of great ideas, so thank you so much for that. I had been looking through the GORAM plan for returning to school, and it looked like they had like a specific remote learning software, maybe? And I wondered if that's anything that we've considered, and I meant that, I guess that's what I wondered.
Can you give me more details, like what, what exactly that means, a remote learning software? Are you talking about like an LMS, a learning management system?
It may well be, I'm sorry, I was just trying to, to look it up right now. I'm sitting in the library parking lot because I got kicked off Zoom at home, so my resources are not with me. So I'll, I'll send you an email if I can get the exact information and.
Kathy, I think I know what it is. It's Edmentum Exact Path.
Okay. Is that, is that a learning management system, do you know, Don?
Edmentum, we, we've used, and it provides courses for seventh grade and up. I don't know exactly what Edmentum Exact Path is.
Oh, I see.
But I believe, because I was looking through that same document that Kim's referring to.
Okay.
And I saw that they did, they have purchased that, and I believe it is from middle school and high school.
So almost like a virtual high school type program.
Very similar to virtual high school.
Okay, okay. So I would say, no, we have not. I think we have felt that we can meet our students' needs without doing that. But I'm certainly open to considering that. Especially for those students who are going to be a hundred percent remote.
Excellent, thank you, and I'm sorry I did not have my information here to.
Hey, you had Dell at the ready.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks, Kathy.
I have a question. Your first question, your first answer to the first question was talking about how much teachers have been learning over the summer and all the different subjects that they were gaining knowledge on. Is there a plan to share the wealth for teachers now to teach each other about that information? Is that in the plan for the first few weeks of school?
Well, so if you had asked me that question under the calendar that you approved the last time we met, I would have said we'd be hard-pressed to find that time, because just the, all that professional development that I outlined, combined with, well, including the work that the nurses are going to need to do and the mandatory trainings that Donna alluded to, I, I don't think that there wouldn't have been time. But with the calendar proposal before you now, the idea that we will pick up an extra four days, absolutely, absolutely. And I know, you know, some of that's already been happening. I know at the high school, at the end of the school year, there was a sharing of best practices that was very, very effective.
That's good to hear. I think I, I think that's so essential.
Agreed.
Are there any other questions?
And maybe Heather, maybe that's why we're not running out to purchase a remote learning program.
Perhaps. We have a lot of talent right here.
A lot of talent right here in this district, yes.
Yep.
Yes, we do.
All right, well, thank you very much for that, Kathy. It was chock-full of information, but very much appreciate it. Continuing, we have Max, we were out of order. I believe Max is Perry, our Director of Facilities and Transportation.
Good evening. I'm going to try to go as quick as possible, but, you know, feel free to stop me if, if you want to ask questions about something. I know we have about four or five more to get through. I'll start off with answering some of the questions that were posed on the paperwork we received, and then finish up with some information in reference to the facilities study we received back in September. One of the questions that I received was on transportation, and Donna, I believe, did answer this question. But transportation schedule will be released when all details of student enrollment are finalized, and we know who would be on Maroon Day and Gold Day, and, and who's going to stay full remote and those things. Once that's all cleared up, then we'll get a transportation schedule out to the public if we should go with the hybrid program. We had a teacher ask about Plexiglas in classrooms. As of right now, and I'll say, everything that I have been doing in the past few months has been subject to change. Every day, it seems like I'm playing a game, You sunk my battleship. So everything that I'm going to talk about now is always subject to change. But anyway, Plexiglas in classrooms. Right now, I am just focused on high-traffic areas where we know we're going to have a lot of people coming and going, such as the main offices and possibly guidance offices, and, and we'll go from there. But we do, we will have face shields available and masks as well to those who need it in, in the meantime. Let's see, hand washing. I mean, I had a request to see if we would have any portable hand washing stations in classrooms. As of right now, there is no plan to have portable hand wash stations due to the maintenance of the removal of the wastewater and adding of the fresh water to the tanks in a portable station. We will be, we're actually in the process right now of installing hand sanitizing stations with a safe foam seventy, seventy percent alcohol-based hand sanitizer in each room, and we'll probably even expand outside of each room. There might be some in the hallways, offices. Right now, the focus on the classroom, but that will grow as we have more time to install them. Let's see. I have classrooms. Teaching staff will need to dis, disin, that's it. Teacher had asked whether, who is going to be handling disinfecting of classrooms in between classes? I know some schools are thinking about keeping kids in the room. Other schools, such as the high school, are going to continue with the same plan as switching from classroom to classroom. Those teachers would be responsible for disinfecting their classrooms, and that is solely just due to the lack of manpower. Well, you would have nowhere near the custodial capabilities to disinfect each classroom at the change of class. So that would be handled by the teacher, and we would supply chemicals to them to do the disinfecting. There was a question about PPE, and I believe Jen and Donna both answered this one as well. But we do, I do have some supplies that I purchased for my department, but also added a little more to the list, so we had something to start up with if we should go with the hybrid. So we do have, I have about two thousand non-surgical disposable masks, and I'd say about fifty face shields, rubber gloves, all the basics, no gowns, though, for Dell. I, our, our plan for the year would be just disinfection of buildings would be the main focus, should we go with the hybrid, and the, the cleaning of the building would come second. Not saying that we would leave our buildings dirty, but the focus would obviously be on disinfection first. And when, once that is completed and we feel good about that, then the cleaning part would begin. All ventilation units will be operating with the maximum amount of fresh air that we can set the dampers for. Most are at a hundred percent, that they can pull in outside air and exhaust internal air as well. Oh, and I also had a question on air purifiers and, air purifiers or HEPA filters and fans in classrooms. And this is still a work in progress, and I actually, I actually read an article in the New York Times just before coming into this meeting where they have, I guess, just discovered today that scientists were able to retrieve COVID from an aerosol in, in a hospital, which means that the ruling could very well go past a six-foot social distancing that is now airborne, but more to come on that. We'll, we'll see what the CDC and WHO do with that in the upcoming weeks. I want to circle back to the facility study that we received back in September two thousand and nineteen. Colby Company had reported in that study that there was a, there were areas of concern in all the buildings of inadequate ventilation. In the past week, I've been going through the buildings and have discovered that the high school aside of the, the ground floor where the auditorium and gymnasium is, the second floor of the high school and what I consider the first floor where the main offices has no ventilation in the hallways whatsoever. There are no vents in the ceiling. It was never installed back in nineteen sixty-nine when the building was built. And also, we found the same set of circumstances in the nurse's office at the high school as well. We are looking into the possibility of getting ventilation, stealing some ventilation from the main office and getting it into the nurse's office to relieve that part of the problem. But the, the hallways is a much larger issue and would call, would require a full-scale renovation. The middle school in Pond Cove are a similar setup, not quite as bad. They do have vents in their hallways, but not nearly enough. And they're kind of small, smaller size for the amount of air they need to put out. But they do have somewhat of ventilation there. Let me see if I'm forgetting anything. And I, and I also have some smaller spaces where more one-on-one type things happen. I will be sharing those with principals. I already have with Jeff Shedd. I will be working on Troy and Jason's list as well. I just had to take a little bit of break from it while hallways were getting waxed before I could get into some of the areas to complete my list. Outside of that, it's business as usual. I'll, I'll try to finish on a good note that we do have a grant for an LED project that's happening in the high school and has been happening for the most part all summer. That is winding down to the end, and we will have, I'll say ninety-five percent LED lighting within the high school building. So try to end on a good night note. Any questions?
Kimberly, go ahead.
Sorry, I think I didn't put it down for my prior question.
Okay, Nasser.
Hey, guys. So I got a couple of questions, and I was going to save this question till the end, but I think it's the right timing. We had a nice feedback from many, many people with via emails, and one of the emails that stood out for me was, was actually one of our staff and, and professional and like suspected their opinion in reference to health issues in the health background. And they had, she had raised the question about can we utilize the technology? If we utilize the money that we are receiving for technology? And one of the questions would pertain to this, how much are we actually going to be utilizing of that state funding towards the equipment, fans, ventilation, spraying, wiping, all that stuff? Do you have any idea, Perry, what that number may be? And I'm glad that you answered that, you're giving some responsibility to the teachers. It's unfortunate, but it helps. That was one of my questions. And are they going to have something easy like Lysol spraying for them? And in reference to the, the, the new article that I just read, could we use window fans? I know it's all, all about cost. And in reference to the hallways not having, we can have those industrial ground fans, but they may make noise. But all this adds up, as you said, and the game does change on us quite a bit, and I love that analogy of You sunk my battleship. So if you could see how much money might be utilized, it's not, it's unknown. From now till the school starts for the first three months, you may have a budget. After that, the budget may change again. So that's the question. And then question for Heather and others is the, is the, is the email that we read from one of our staff. And we addressed that, we utilize the state funds towards the technology that could be utilized for us in the long run. And that person's idea was let's stick through everything online learning as opposed to going hybrid. So I'm asking a lot of questions, and I'm sorry, but I'm done for tonight, I think.
All right, that's, I'm just going to shoot off on some of the, some of the ones that were pertaining to me. As far as air purifiers and fans, I, I'm just finding that there, there, I'm seeing cases where they talk about how fans and air movement can manipulate the, the, the virus within a classroom where, let's just say you have a fan in the back window of the classroom and it's blowing out. What, what happens is if, if a student in the front opposing corner in, of the classroom coughs or sneezes, whatever, that gets out. The fan in the back room can cause the germs that they just let out and, and now does away with the six-foot ruling and can draw towards the fan, infecting everybody in the path. They, they do recommend it, the CDC does recommend fans and HEPA filters for your home, but you really have to be cautious in a public environment setting. There were a couple of studies done in China where there was a, a restaurant that they believe a large portion of the people in the restaurant were infected by the air conditioning system that, you know, just pulls air in and blows it right back out. That's the same type of scenario. So I, I'm hesitant with the, with the fan thing. That would, that would need to be a group discussion, and I think the nurses would all need to be included in that and, and decide as a group as to how we want to handle that. We are looking at more technology as far as the ventilation system. We don't, we don't, it, it would, it would be an exorbitant amount of work to get ventilation into the hallways because of all the existing plumbing pipes, sprinkler lines, data cables, electrical lines, everything that's already up in the city would need, literally need to be moved out of the way in order to put ventilation in those hallways. So I, I, I think that type of project would exceed the amount that we. So I think that type of project would exceed the amount that we currently have and go quite a bit past it to do a project like that. I don't know, am I missing, am I missing anything else? But we, to just back up, you know, like Donna had sent me an email today and Erin Taylor, one of our nurses, had sent me an email about ozone, it's like an ozone generator that helps to cure. I'm learning as we go here. The COVID SARS V2 or however they were, it does kill that virus. And I'm looking into that technology. I was actually waiting to hear, to see if they were gonna declare it as an airborne aerosol. And it looks like we might be heading in that direction. So that makes me feel a little more confident about that, spending money on that type of system versus what it was before was just, and when they, when they said airborne, it was more mucus or water droplets from a sneeze or a cough. The airborne aerosol is more of you releasing it in speech. So more to come on that, but we are pursuing the option of a better technology within our duck work.
So the question that you left out is the total budget that you have aligned for this? And personally, I think you could alone spend the million dollars easily within the six months. So do you, do you have, what are you spending so far and do you expect to spend more?
I'm definitely expecting to spend more. I actually don't know the total of what I spent so far, but I'm, I'm being a little more cautious because there's so much unknown. I, and I'm kind of a, you know, I like my gizmos. I pretty much have a room right around me right now full of gizmos that I like. But with this, I'm, I'm being a little more cautious with our spending on, on how we proceed with things. It is simply only because of the unknown. And I, for instance, one of, one of the things that sunk my battleship this week, along with other facility directors throughout the state, was a lot of the schools were relying on these electronic, I'll call it a fogger. Anyway, you put, you put the disinfectant in it and you can literally come into a room or a school bus, which is what we were really focusing on, and actually you go and you can disinfect an entire school bus within eight minutes. Very handy tool. Well, the EPA rolled in this week and told everybody that you are not allowed to use those in a public environment, that it would require a pesticide applicator's license for each person who would be using it. That was a major blow to a lot of schools this week. Cause I know, I know specifically there were a bunch of schools that literally bought one per custodian and they're, you know, upwards from $800 to $1,000, depending on which you're purchasing. And yeah, they were, they were manning their whole staff with one. And fortunately, we have a few, but the two that I had coming, I'm able to return. So, or I canceled the order. But yeah, we're pursuing with caution. I don't know the actual dollar amount. I'm sure Marcy can figure that out probably within 10 minutes, but.
Is that technology the same as they use on the planes to disinfect planes?
I believe that's the O2 system that they're using, which is what we will be looking into shortly. Donna had just sent me an email today that Falmouth was pursuing that. And the college where Erin Taylor had gone over in New Hampshire is installing that system as well. So I'm pursuing it. I'm, I like, I like to see third-party testing on everything before I, you know, what the manufacturer tells me and what's actually the case. I, you know, I wanna, I wanna read it and make sure it's working.
Thank you, Perry.
Anything else?
Elizabeth got a question.
Thank you. Perry, I was wondering, since typically there, we don't have the kind of custodial staff during the day to go through and sanitize the bathrooms. Since we're in an atypical situation, if we are able to open in a hybrid, will we have custodians sanitizing those high-touch areas, especially restrooms?
Yes, that is the plan. What I would do, if we went with the hybrid route, I'm, I would start off with one custodian on day shift in one of the, we have one up at the middle school and elementary and one down at the high school. I would start with that and see what type of workload they can handle. And if they start to lag behind, we're currently looking into whether we could take somebody off a night shift and, or actually two people would be an additional one for each building. That could work day shift as well. So we would end up with two people in each building and they would handle the lunch duty, disinfecting and the bathrooms as well. I do want to tackle, the plan is to tackle the bathrooms more during the day and focus on them on a rotational schedule. There's a lot of unknown at this time until we would actually pull the trigger and, and learn as we go. But yes, there would be, overall, in general, there is going to be a high focus on disinfecting.
Great, thank you. Also, kind of nothing new to those of us that have been paying attention since the facility study was done, that we have some major issues with ventilation. But my, I kind of have a specific question about the, the rooms that were sort of repurposed from like storage closets into instructional rooms? And can you talk about those a little bit?
Yes, those have all been flagged. What I'm looking for when I go into a space is not only a vent of fresh air coming in, but a vent to pull air out. You know, creating that fresh air and also exhausting the air that's in the room in the, in the space and a lot of, a lot of storage areas. I know, I saw Christine here. Yeah, Christine's here. Her office is a former storage space. Hi, Christine. And, you know, that type of space has just a, an exhaust vent. So it doesn't have fresh air coming in. It's just an exhaust vent. Those spaces are fine for that employee to be in. It's when other people would join them, then it becomes an issue. So what I, what I said, the list I had given to Jeff Shedd was those, those people can work in those spaces, you know, as them being in your office. But, you know, the recommendation is not to have a one-on-one or one-on-two, three, four in those spaces. It's, it would literally just be their office that they could work out of and answer phone and check emails and things like that. We do have a couple of classrooms that were divided in half. The ventilator is naturally mounted on the outside wall. So the, the room that is now on the outside wall has ventilation. The room on the inside hallway part of the space does not. So again, those are all situations where that could be used by one person or maybe even for storage, whatever we need it for. But the recommendation would not be to exceed one person in those spaces.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, you've got Director of Nutritional Services. Let's see. Where's Peter? Are you here, Peter?
Yes, I'm here. Hi. I really didn't have any questions. I just have a couple of scenarios that we have, you know, put forth. Our remote, we would continue with our sending food home on a, on a regular basis for those that are in need. Also, in the hybrid model, unfortunately, we're gonna need to order quite a bit of extra equipment to facilitate the delivering to the classrooms. And also, we're in the process of trying to hire some extra substitutes on to try to also expedite the meal service. We also have got a quote and actually I'm gonna call the person tomorrow. And we have an online meal ordering service that will be something that will be part of the, our menu planning software. That will be an app that students or parents can order up to a month previous. And it would completely, completely eliminate all of our POS systems in contact with students. They would order their meal, they would be charged. And then also, we would be able to deliver by classroom and/or however we end up, what model we end up being in. But that's what the nutrition department is doing.
Okay. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Doesn't look like there's any questions. So Athletic Director, Jeff.
Hello, everyone. So before I begin, I'd just like to reiterate, a lot of the information in this update is tentative. Things seem to be evolving, what seems to be like on a daily basis. There's still a number of unanswered questions also. As Perry had mentioned, just some of the simple planning things that we were sort of counting on, like the electrostatic handheld sprayer, which would significantly reduce time sanitizing. That, that's sort of a game changer, no pun intended, for, for how we were gonna clean equipment and keep things sanitized. So it's evolving, but just wanted to provide some information as to where we are at this point. So the Main Principals Association recently provided schools with a document to begin high school fall sports on September 8th. This was done with a guidance from the CDC, the Maine Department of Education, the NFHS, the National Athletic Trainers Association, and a number of school administrators. The document is a work in progress and we're expecting some more updates in the next few days. Currently, schools across the state are in the process of creating a COVID response team. They're tasked with the responsibility of creating and implementing a safe return-to-play plan. This would align with the district's return-to-school guidelines as well as the MPA guidelines. So some of the key points to the COVID response team would be identifying protocols and guidelines and disinfecting standards. But one of the most important pieces to this will be educating students, families, and coaching staff. It will be, if fall sports do happen, it will be a change. It's gonna happen at a slower pace than what people may be used to right now. So the education piece is gonna be, is gonna be prudent and super important. On July 6th, high school students in 14 of the 16 main counties began a voluntary summer phase-in program, which was created by the MPA. This was a very controlled setting that provided students an opportunity to participate in a non-sport-specific and strength and conditioning activity. The second phase began July 20th and we're currently in phase three. And still 14 counties participating out of the 16. Phase four will begin August 24th. This will be a continuation of the volunteer summer strength and conditioning for fall sports only. So we are preparing for this target date to participate. Again, it's voluntary. A lot will depend on where schools are currently and what's happening in each county. Phase five is the September 8th fall sports preseason start date for the high school. While waiting for the information from the Main Principals Association, our COVID response team will be fine-tuning our return-to-play plan at this time. We don't have any fall competition schedules. Leagues are creating regionalized schedules based on the latest MPA guidelines, which will reduce the number of opponents, reduce travel and kind of keep better, it'll keep our, improve our tracing and limit travel immensely. And which probably is a good thing. It's been, we traveled by several schools when things were better and always wondered why we'll drive by five or six schools going to one location. So there's a benefit from all this. It may be how things are done moving forward. So as soon as we have any of that scheduling information, that will be sent out immediately. In addition to a return-to-play plan, we're also looking at alternative plans in the event that the fall season is not a viable option. So our focus is to keep students involved and do that in a controlled and safe environment, which would include our coaching staff. So something like that may look like something in-house that could be done similar to that phase-four model, which would involve more skill work and conditioning. Then at the middle school, there's a Cumberland County Athletic Directors Meeting tomorrow to discuss middle school fall sports options. These protocols would be consistent with the high school. Tentatively, the initiative, it seems as though schools are leaning towards it, the September 21st start date, possibly the 14th. But it's majority have been talking about the September 21st as start date for middle school sports. A concern shared amongst several schools, athletic directors, sort of falls in line with Troy's concern. And that involves keeping the cohorts if we're in a hybrid model. So group, the groups would align with specific days that they're in school. So if a group was learning remotely, that group would not be participating. The group that was in school would participate on that certain day. Also, looking at competitions, possibly with neighboring schools, even looking at Saturdays. This would assist with some transportation logistics. And alternative planning also includes in-house athletic experience, similar to the high school where skill development and conditioning-type activities would be a potential option, even intramurals would be there. But there's still a lot of work that needs to take place in a very short amount of time. And unfortunately, this is a result of where we are. So we're just going to hopefully have something in the next couple of days that is a little more definitive to help start or fine-tune some of the plans that we've already made. But it's, it's been a challenge not knowing or receiving information and going back and having to redo a lot of the work that was spent this summer. So, but I'm feeling pretty positive, pretty good right now, very optimistic and just appreciate everyone's patience while we sort through this and we will get through it as soon as possible. And that's where we are with athletics.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Kimberly.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate the update. This, I don't know if this is a question for you or Donna, but if we end up in a situation where we are remote learning, whether that be because we've, you know, the state has put us in a red zone or the board has decided remote learning is. put us in a red zone, or the board has decided remote learning is what they're recommending, would we proceed with athletics, or would athletics not take place if we are in a remote learning situation?
I guess it really depends on the circumstances. I mean, I think it could be, it certainly could be an option. Think that, you know, especially with being outdoors, things with a space, having controlled environments and in pods of 10, which has been going on throughout the summer. That might, that makes things certainly a lot more manageable. But it's probably ultimately up to the district and the school board to make that final call. But I think, I think it could be manageable if, depending on how extreme things were at the time.
Well, we would have to have some long discussions about that.
Yep, for sure.
Okay, Elizabeth.
Thank you. So do our sports teams have to follow the CDC guidelines, including six-foot distancing? And how does that apply to contact sports?
That is all in the guidelines. And for a while, again, here's a perfect example of things changing. Face masks were to be required at all times. That's changed a little bit now when exercising. That isn't, that isn't the guy, that isn't the expectation that they could be removed when exercising. Six-foot distance. I'm not sure how that happens, but it's it's certainly in that it's going to be permitted in the guidelines, according to the guidelines. And yeah, I would, I'm not, honestly, that's, that's, that's a good question, and I'm sure it has been raised, but.
I did hear something that they were looking at possibly doing non-touching sports. I don't know what you call them, but sports in ways like cross-country, those types of sports where it wasn't necessary to physically touch another person.
Correct. Yeah, there's been a lot of stuff that's been through, and it's, there's been a lot, there's a lot of rumor. There's a lot of speculation, a lot of unknown, and it makes it even more challenging, especially for answers like, or for questions that you have. That was, that's a great, that's a great question, and I think a lot of us have that same. We're just all, we're all kind of in that same boat.
I agree, and I think that you know that I'm an athletics lover and a supporter. But understanding that, you know, and I understand why student, student athletes would not necessarily be wearing masks while they're exerting themselves. But then to say that they wouldn't be distancing strictly six feet apart, it's like saying you can't get COVID if you're playing a sport. And that's concerning.
It also opens us up to liability, so.
Yeah, and that's actually in the phase five. So the September 8th is the phase five. And phase five, we have not received official guidelines at this point. Our guidelines that we have run through September 7th.
I have another question, but I don't know if it's really for Jeff or Donna or Perry or Janet. It's really about opening up our facilities and grounds to non-school groups. If we do wind up choosing to have sports, and our sports teams are using our school grounds. I know back in the spring, we, you know, we decided that we weren't going to have people in, you know, we're not, I assume we're not going to be renting out our buildings and letting people have birthday parties and that sort of thing. And I'm, I'm, and I'm wondering if non-school groups will also be, will be allowed to use our fields, whether, you know, separate from whether or not our school teams are using them.
Well, up their town, it's a town facility, so I think that would require conversation with the school and town manager.
Okay, any more questions around athletics? Moving on with that technology.
Good evening. I just have one question that was raised for me. And the question was, if teachers have outside classes and they want to do outside classes, would there be Wi-Fi available? The answer to that as of this moment is no. However, we have run three wires, two to the ally arts wing that will project out to the basketball court and out to the baseball field at the middle school. So there's possibility to do that. I would have to coordinate with Perry of facilities to make sure he puts a hole, two holes in his beautiful building to put a wire through. We do have the equipment to do that. Also, on the 1930s building in the middle school, we have a wire that's already in place there so that Wi-Fi can be checked, projected between Ponco and the middle school. Again, I would have to ask Perry to put another beautiful hole in his, his building there. As far as the high school, the answer to that is probably at this moment, no, we have no wires or any plans to do that. And it all depends on where those classes would be set up, or how easy that would be, or how difficult they would be. I don't know if anybody has been going out to the Walmarts, the Best Buys, or, or trying to get things online through Amazon. But technology equipment now is very, very hard to get in some cases. We do have the technology equipment to go ahead and do the Wi-Fi for the outside, for the, those three wires that I mentioned at the middle school and that Ponco. However, we do not have in place the Wi-Fi equipment out at the high school. So it'll be a combination of where they're going to, would like to hold the classes at the high school. And then also if we have the ability to actually get the equipment in from the various vendors. And that was my question, and I can open it up for any other questions you have.
Phil.
Yeah, thanks, Phil. This, my first question is, I think, probably a combination for you and Kathy. You answered this last time, but I've received a couple of comments about it again, and that's just the idea of live streaming teaching. You, you did answer that last time. But for some people who are not, who weren't on that, I've had some parents ask me, why can't we do that as part of remote learning? And what I remember, it was a, it was an equipment issue and technology issue, I believe, and perhaps a curriculum issue. But if you could address that, and I'll just make a quick comment on what you just said about internet, I think we should do whatever it takes to make Wi-Fi available, because I'm a strong proponent of the outdoor classroom. If teachers want to do that, but I think it's a good opportunity. So if we can make that easier, there's a couple, a couple of places where you, we could do it today. I would, you know, it's my, my suggestion to do it. That's where I come from on that one. But my question is about the live streaming of, of teaching.
Why, why, live streaming shouldn't be an issue whatsoever. Again, we've never done any of this before, Phil. However, I don't believe there's going to be a problem. I'd like to, you know, reserve a little bit of that comment and not say we're never gonna have a problem. Because the bandwidth is there, even if we had, even if we had like 90% of the students and still had to do 10% outside connectivity, I can't see a problem with that. We have never reached our thresholds doing that. And I just can't see a problem. As far as the equipment, however, Phil.
Right.
For example, whether you talk about swivel or owl, or even if you talk about just getting cameras, okay? For example, owl, you know, I contacted the, I don't know if anybody knows what owl is or swivel is, but they're video conferencing equipment that are used basically for education. And what they do is they follow the, within a eight, they say 15 feet, but between, realistically between an eight and 12-foot feet radius. A person who's talking, the owl or the swivel, just turns to that person as they're talking. Okay, so it's not really live or anything, but it really does allow it, instead like this Zoom where everybody just sees one picture ahead, as the capability of seeing, you know, a student asking a question to the teacher. Well, I talked to the Apple, not the Apple, I've talked to the Apple representative today too, but the owl representative today, and they're around 12 weeks out. So if I ordered one tomorrow, or I ordered 50 tomorrow, it's still 12 weeks out before we get that unit. The same goes with the swivel, and also same goes with like Logitech video cameras. If I went to Amazon, there are 18, well, as of 1 o'clock this afternoon, there was 18 available. And if I went to Logitech themselves, and that's just one example. Of course, there's a lot of video cameras out there. But as of my own experience at home, trying to get a video camera, it took quite a while, about six weeks just to get a single one out of, out of China. So those are concerns. We also have concerns with some of the equipment. You know, the simple things like bags for, for, that are really non-technical, but are used for technology. Bags for laptops and so on, so forth. So, but I also agree with you, Phil, those, at least those three, if the, if the calendar is approved tonight, that would give us a lot more time to do that. And those three would be very easy to do. And again, with the high school, it's really talking to Jeff and Jeff and Perry and saying, okay, you know, where are the spots that we could do the outside classrooms, okay? And then taking a look and say, can we, you know, simply put it into our network cabinet? Or do we have to run some fiber, or so on and so forth? So it's just those type of decisions.
Great, thanks. That's very helpful.
And then Kimberly has a question?
She does. Go ahead, Kimberly.
I'm sorry.
No.
That's your job, not mine. Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. You pretty much answered it. I was just asking or thinking about bandwidth. I, I've heard it come up periodically and wonder, it sounds like you feel like, you know, we're in a good place with that. But is it something that can be increased if necessary? And what are the cost implications if that's something we feel we need to do to make things work?
Well, the only thing that I would really do, well, first of all, everyone has to understand that we get a very good connection, bandwidth from the University of Maine through Network Maine. They use part of our, part of the E-Rate funding to supplement that, and they have been very, very good since they've started this. And we've had very little issues with connectivity. The only thing that I would recommend, but then again, it's cost, is that what happens if Network Maine goes down? Okay, and you always want to have, no matter what it is in technology, you always want to have a backup system or some way. And we really don't have to do that. But if Network Maine goes down, the chances are, you know, the other provider, which I'm gonna call them FairPoint, and I know they're not FairPoint, but I'm, that's what I saw on my mind at nine, at 10 o'clock at night, would be, you know, awesome. The chance of them going down at the same time would be probably the same thing. So again, Kimberly, I don't believe we have issues, we'll have an issue with our bandwidth currently. It's just that we don't have something if they decide to go down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And then our nurses.
Hi, Heather. It's Erin. I'm going to be representing the nurses for just a quick presentation. And then Karen and Jill are both on the Zoom to be available for questions. But I would like to be able to share my screen.
Okay, Jen, can you help her with that?
She's on.
Okay. So what, what the nurses want to do is just really walk everyone through what a typical day would look like from when students and families are home until they, and once they enter the school. As far as precautions we will be taking in the school setting. And then as far as if there are reported illnesses and what that would look like for families as well as for nurse communication. So what you see on the screen right now is the checklist of the symptoms that we will be monitoring for, or asking parents to be monitoring for before they send their child to school each day. And if you, previous school board meetings and in the district planning meetings, if people watched those, there was lots of talk back and forth about what would the screening process look like? Would we be doing it as students were entering the school? Would we be doing it, or would we have a database for parents to be reporting to us? And for right now, and as the DOE framework has alluded to, it's a home screening that will be happening. It's, it's looking for parents' obligation to commit to doing this every morning before sending their children to school. And so what our plan is at this point in time would be to send weekly reminders via Power School Alert Blasts to families as a reminder, don't forget to do your symptom checks before you come to school. I'm just gonna scroll down. So as part of this screening process, we also have a parent contract. This will be uploaded to the Power School portal as part of the forms that parents fill out prior to their school, their child starting school, similar to the concussion policy forms, technology forms and whatnot. And so you'll see the first bullet is saying that you've read and understood the parent handbook. We are in the final stages of working through the parent handbook just to make sure that we can have all the added links for a lot of what you've heard this evening from the administrators. There's spots within this handbook so that we have links to the remote learning plans and the hybrid plans and whatnot. So once all of that is finalized, then those will be linked in, and then we will be able to share out the handbook with families. And so we're asking families to read through the handbook, have a good understanding of all of the protocols that we're gonna have in place, a lot of what you've heard discussed tonight. But just to highlight really that this is a whole partnership that we're trying our best to make sure that the schools are as safe as possible. We're following the recommendations of the CDC. We're working on the DOE framework. But it's a full partnership and compliance from the community as well as from the staff that's gonna be in the school buildings. And I've highlighted just the importance really of, we, we're looking for that daily checklist. And for parents to really be mindful, if they're questioning, is my child okay to stay home? If you're questioning it, then keep your child home that day. And when you're reporting your absences to us, it's imperative that if your child is out sick, you tell the school why. Because we're gonna be really working hard to monitor symptoms to see about potential outbreaks and problems within the community. So depending on what your school does as far as absentee reporting, it could be through Power School portal. It could be through phone calls. If you're talking to one of the administrative assistants in the building, please let them know exactly why your child will be out sick that day. It could be that they're going to a doctor's appointment, but whatever information you can share with us will be very helpful. So next I have two, hold on, I gotta shrink this. These are a few flow shot, flow charts. Oh, shoot, hold on. I'm having a hard time seeing, let me see. Okay, this is a flow chart that was, it's part of the Department of Education framework. It was, it's a collaboration of the Maine Association of School Nurses and other, other people who have helped really a lot of insight into what, what will happen if we have a child who appears sick within the school building. And so it's a, it's a basic algorithm that we would follow. If a child were to show up in our office, we're gonna assess them, what symptoms are they showing? If they are showing that they're coughing, complaining of a sore throat, if If they are showing that they're coughing, complaining of a sore throat, if they're complaining that they might feel feverish, we're going to have two offices set up. So before that child makes their way into our office, or we're really looking for teachers to be corresponding with us to let them know, I'm sending the student down, this is their complaint, so we're ready for them. Sometimes it might be that we go to the student in their classroom, but depending on the situation, if it's sounding like it could be symptomatic for COVID, we have a special isolation room where we put those students versus other students who would need more well child or well office visits, such as if they were coming in for diabetes care, medications, should they be hurt on the playground, et cetera. So if we were suspect that there were some COVID-like symptoms, depending on the, the type of mask that student is wearing, if it was a face covering, a homemade face covering, we're going to, we're going to switch that out, put a surgical mask on them, a little bit better protection, call the, the parents to take the student home, recommend that they reach out to their child's pediatrician. This is a sample of what, this is from the Maine Academy of Pediatrics, and this is a basic flow chart algorithm of what is going to look like if you call your pediatrician. So you're going to reach out to them and explain, these are the symptoms my child's having. If it's one symptom, they might tell you, let's watch that, those symptoms for 24 hours, your child is going to stay home from school. If the symptoms have resolved, the child could come back to school. If there's two or more symptoms, depending on if the symptoms are in the high-risk category, then the pediatrician's going to make the call of, do we continue to monitor? Do I want your child to come in for a COVID test at that point? If the child is, does have a COVID test done, then we're going to wait until, if you look at the middle one, the, I'm sorry, so if we do, if we do the swab, it comes back positive, the child stays home for 10 days, plus they have to be 24 hours fever-free with no medications on board, no Tylenol or ibuprofen, and they need to have symptoms resolved before they can come back to us. So this is something similar that all, that all pediatricians will be using. For this, this is our, this is a copy of the school's decision tree, this is from the CDC website, and so this is what would happen if we have a confirmed case of COVID in the building. And so we assess the risk. And so within, it could be a short two to five day shutdown of the building to allow for cleaning, disinfecting and contact tracing. That's the most important piece of this, of this picture. And so what contact tracing is doing is the nurses would be working very closely with a CDC liaison, and that liaison's really going to guide these decisions for us. And so with the contact tracing, we're going to be looking for exposure. And so what exposure means, what is defined as if there is close contact, less than six feet for a period of time that's equal to or greater than 15 minutes, and this can be cumulative over time, with the person who has tested positive, then certain decisions are going to be made about if that person quarantines or not. As part of the plan that we have in place at our school currently, with the measures that we have in place, including social distancing, trying to maintain our students with, within that six-foot parameter, keeping our students co, in small cohorts, requiring the use of facial coverings for everyone who's entering that building, and providing opportunities for frequent hand washing in the buildings. If, when we talk to the CDC, all of those measures are taking place, that's going to reduce the amount of time that we would have to shut down our buildings and the amount of time that we would have to have people quarantining. So it's, it's so important that we continue to follow the CDC guidelines. Karen had a great way of describing it, is that when you enter the school building, we enter thinking, everybody could be a potential carrier, lots of people are asymptomatic carriers. So we want to make sure we have that, that bubble around us so as to not, to not come too close in the, so that we would reduce our exposure risks. Another important piece to, to this piece is that if we are in the hybrid model, and so we have two days of in-school and then there's two days of the remote school, the people who are on their remote days and who are looking to cohort with other families, it is so important that you've also follow the guidelines in which we are doing in the schools with the social distancing, the masking, because a lot of, if we're not diligent on the days that we're not in the buildings, that's when we're going to see possible transmission and exposure within the schools. I'm going to stop my share and then open up for questions.
Erin, I'm going to just chime in too, that just how rapidly these resources are changing, you know, that the pediatric, the pediatric document just came out on Friday, and they're working diligently to have resources for the local healthcare providers just to, to best meet the needs of the schools. I mean, they're all kind of figuring this out as they go, and they've all been incredibly busy as well. So, you know, this is all subject to change, it's all a work in progress, and our jobs is to keep abreast of what the guidelines are and to make sure we keep our schools as healthy as possible.
I just want to speak, Jill Young here, the nurse at the middle school, I just want to speak to some of the questions that we received, and Karen and Erin, I just received these via email. So just answering some of these questions, I just scanned through them, but it seems like our community has a lot of questions regarding masks. So we will have a protocol, and we do have a protocol within our handbooks that, once we receive the decision tonight from the board as to how we move forward, they will hopefully get from draft form to your hands very quickly, but masks are a requirement. So if you have a child at home that you're concerned about not being able to wear a mask, then you should elect a remote option. Masks are a requirement, not an option. 100% of the time with the exception of eating and designated mask breaks. Those mask breaks, six-foot spacing, seated ideally, so we can guarantee that the six foot, we can ensure that six-foot spacing. So when we cannot ensure that, the masks stay on. And those would be brief breaks, but it is going to be a challenge, just walking out into the heat and humidity today for a very, very short time. It's hard to keep that mask on, and we understand that, but it's what we have to do. If we have any hope of re-entering the building and providing a safe environment, it's the number one defense, so we have to do that. The masks have to be on. So heat, humidity, we think about our classrooms this time of year, it's hot, and we don't have fans blowing in or maybe not blowing out, so it's not a pleasant environment. There were other questions about clear masks. We are, we do have a shipment of those coming in, hopefully. I don't know when we, or if we will get those, that's another decision that needs to be made. We need to have appropriate PPE, that's one of the items, along with several others. But clear masks would be utilized primarily for those hard of hearing, for the staff that it's instructing, those that are hard of hearing, and for staff members that are hard of hearing for their students. That would be the primary use as well as those that need it for perhaps special ed, foreign language, we would determine who would need those, but we do have those on order through the state, still waiting for those to arrive as far as I know. Sustainability was a question, how can we ensure that our students are going to wear these masks? And it's, I said this at the last board meeting, we rely on each and every one of our community members, our staff, our students, our families. It's not just what happens in our building, it's what happens outside of our building. And there is no way for us to track what happens outside of our building, but we all have to, like Erin said, we have to be diligent, that it just takes one mistake, one gap, one error, one person to not, you know, follow these guidelines, and, you know, we all suffer. So sustainability, we will make sure that our students and staff follow the guidelines to wear the masks, and if we have any difficulty, that would be up to admin to enforce, but I would think that they would go into the remote option. Soiled masks and who provides the masks? So masks, it would be the expectation that students and staff provide their own masks. However, the school will also provide up to two masks per staff and student. They will be available in the classroom as well as throughout the building for those that need a mask. Should it become soiled, should they forget their mask, we will have those available at school as well. Clear face shields, they are not ideal. So it is in our handbooks that we will provide for both staff and students. Face shields alone prove to not be enough. In fact, for those working in close proximity, nurses, special ed, people that can't guarantee and ensure that six-foot spacing, face shields are now going to be in addition to our medical grade masks. So eye cover, eye protection as well as covering our mouth and our nose is now the recommendation. So face shields are not enough alone. Should there be a situation where a staff member or a student needs a face shield, that would need to be approved by administration, and that is in the handbook. Compliance, I've already touched on that. There's questions, and Erin's already touched on this too, but about the screenings, we've gone back and forth and round and round on this, and I was really, really pushing for and advocating for screenings to be done at school upon arrival to ensure that everybody entering the building is screened. That's how we had, had it planned back in June. It changed with the guidance provided in July, from the end of July from the Maine DOE and CDC. And the reason that that guidance changed is because of the asymptomatic, you don't, and because of the honesty that's involved in those screening questions. So number one, we are requiring, you know, we're asking for you to be honest, have you traveled? Are you symptomatic? Have you been exposed? And then do you have fever? And have you taken fever-reducing medication? So that's all, you know, questions that's based on an honor system to begin with. And then the, the temp check, that's not a catch-all. Would it catch a few? That was my hope, and that's why I was really pushing for it. What if we catch, if we just catch one, you know, that makes a big difference, that could affect many. However, I finally came to peace with this decision yesterday, that the reason that they're not recommending it is because it doesn't catch everybody. And like Erin said, we need to assume that everybody in our building has COVID-19. So the person sitting six feet from me, I need to assume that they have the virus, and that is why we are taking all of these precautions, that is why we're wearing the masks, that is why we're doing the distancing, that's why we're washing our hands, that's why we have worked all summer to try to figure this out. So we, that gave me a little peace of mind that that honor system, not only is an honor system, but it won't catch the asymptomatic either. So that's why these precautions are in place. Do I feel good about an honor system? And it is, is it a best practice? Absolutely not. But it's the world we're living in. It's a logistical, financial nightmare, and it's not foolproof. It's not perfect. So the screening, hopefully that answered your questions there. And I think I made it through most of the questions, I hope, so I scanned them quickly and tried to summarize. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jill and Erin. I don't see any board members raising their hands for questions. Are there any other questions in general? Kimberly?
Thank you. The three of you I know have worked so hard this summer, so thank you, thank you for all the hours and thoughts and reading and research. And my question is, you know, maybe the building principals have thoughts on this, but I'm wondering if there's any intention to have a time set aside, like a sort of an information orientation education opportunity for each building specifically to, you know, sort of go over the compliance and orient families to, you know, if we end up in a hybrid situation, to what the, the new school experience is going to be, and, you know, field questions that people might have specific to their own individual buildings.
I mean, I think I'll speak for the high school. I mean, I think in general, yes, is there anything scheduled yet? No? But I think there's a variety of means that need to be used to communicate to folks and let them ask questions and get their questions answered. So I'm sure we'll all do that. I don't have any doubt about that. It's, I don't, I don't think we have specific plans in place yet, but it's, becomes a priority after whatever decision is made in this meeting to see what we need to communicate.
Thank you.
Troy, I don't know if you want to speak for the middle school or if you want me to, but I can start anyway. For the middle school, we have a plan to provide not only the parent-student handbook, but, and we have a staff handbook as well, but also a very simplified version for our students. And within that would be a video tutorial of what a day looks like, and that would go over all of our protocols, our expectations, take them through the buses, through the halls with a drone into a classroom that's set up to really give them that visual, and also at the same time provide them the education that they need prior to day one. We met, as Troy said, last week and did a walkthrough of the halls. We're waiting on some things. Our protocols on paper look great, but it's a puzzle and all the pieces need to come together before we can act on it and expedite it. So we need, you know, the signage and we need the PPE, and we need the sanitizing equip, you know, materials and equipment to come in before we can act on it. Once we have all of that, we will get that film in there, and I think that's going to be the easiest way, just a visual for everyone, both staff, students, not both, staff, students, parents, everybody involved to see what our day looks like and what we're doing to make sure everybody feels safe.
Elizabeth, you have your hand raised.
If people have questions specific to the nurses, I'm happy to wait because I was sort of holding some questions till the end to circle back to some other people that came to me after they spoke and we moved on.
I'm not seeing any hands raised, any other hands, so go ahead, Elizabeth. Thank you for that.
So no matter what we decide tonight, our students are going to be in remote learning at least part of the time. Some of them are going to be in remote learning all the time, and it's likely that they'll all be in remote learning for a period of time. I guess I'd like to know a little bit more specifically at the high school, what students who choose 100% remote learning for the semester, you know, what their, what their day will be like? And I'd like to hear about the teachers who are going to be teaching from home because of their health situation, how they will be delivering their instruction. I have more, I'm going to just stop there.
So in terms of the teachers who will be delivering instruction, they'll clearly be doing it over Zoom, just as if they were in the regular classroom. The only difference would be we'll have to have an adult in the classroom to monitor the half of the students who are participating in the hybrid model and are not 100% remote learning. In terms of the students who are 100% at home, again, I, there's some unknowns there. My ideal is they will be able to connect live at the same time as the classes are meeting in the building, and they will be able to be sort of participating members of those classes. And, and I think I take some, some comfort from Noel that the bandwidth will not be an issue, but I know even he knows that, we don't know that for sure until we try it, but there are also just some instructional challenges and some training challenges to be able to make that work. If for whatever reason we can't do that, then we'd probably be more like what the other two schools are doing, which is more asynchronous, provision of asynchronous work for students to do at home, films of lesson, teachers, teachers posting videos of them instructing, plus supplemented as they will be at the other two schools by teachers contacting students who are 100% remote at home to have regular contact with them during the week. So one way or another, we're going to include the remote learners as, as much as we can and can, can, can get close to navigating the experiences if they were in, they were part of this, the group that was in, in school for part of the time, at home the rest of the time. I'm going to. I'm optimistic we can do that, but if you hear me hedging my bets, it's because we haven't tried it yet. And realistically, you can't try it completely until everybody is back and we can actually do it.
Thank you. I guess this is probably for Donna. I think there probably has to be sort of a go, no-go date as far as PPE or other things that need to be in place as far as if we do choose to go with a hybrid model, knowing that we don't have the necessary PPE in or, you know, there are other things that aren't in place yet when there's still time. But if, you know, time runs out, you know, there, I think that there needs to be a date and we need to set it tonight or set it together that says, you know, maybe it's one week before school is due to open. If we don't have everything in place, we notify people that we can't go hybrid or whatever it is. I feel like we need to have a hard date.
Yeah, I think a week before is realistic.
I'll yield to later.
Sorry, I muted myself. Any other questions? All right. May I have a motion for item 4A? Oh, sorry, no, we switched it around. My apologies. Sorry, sorry. I don't have it in front of me. Somehow it didn't print properly. My apologies. May I have a motion?
I move we approve the plan for reopening the schools in the fall as discussed.
A second.
What plan would that be?
Oh, oh, sorry. I thought it was the plan that the administrators recommended, which was the AB, AB with Wednesday.
So are you talking hybrid model, Laura?
Oh, yes, the hybrid model, sorry. Yes, the term hybrid model.
That was also my assumption that that was being presented to us tonight. So I'd second that, that motion.
Okay. I'm back on, I've got it. And discussion, board members. Hope.
Okay, I'm just gonna, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi, okay, thank you. Just gonna jump in because I'm afraid that I will not be able to speak in a few minutes. But, uh, so we're deciding whether or not we're going to move forward with proceeding with the hybrid model, which is yellow. I'm just gonna throw some thoughts out here because we're having a discussion now. So this is, this is our period for discussion. I think the plan is excellent and I think the work that was put into the plan was impeccable. I think you can't ask for better planning. I think every detail was, you know, covered and there's no stone left unturned. I think it is equitable to the 100% remote, the opt-out people. I'm saddened that we've basically diminished lesson time for everyone and that seems to be, that's just the nature of the beast right now. You know, but I think sort of, you know, the, the best laid schemes of mice and men, you know, we know what happens. I think there's a fair number of issues in, with, with proceeding with the hybrid plan that I still have a great deal of, of concern over. So the first being compliance. So we're sort of, the hybrid plan relies on faith, you know, faith in that certain things will happen so that we'll have an appropriate level of compliance. As we all know, this is, this is hard and it's been hard to get kids to do the right thing. Someone mentioned outside of school, we have to be compliant. To the extent we have sports, I mean, we're sort of waving our hands and saying that that's, you know, that those individuals who are participating in sports who might be coming into the classroom for the hybrid model aren't actually increasing the risk greatly. So I think, I mean, analogy for the sports participation is we're putting screens on the windows, but we left the front door open. So I think to the extent we were to go with a hybrid model, we really need to have parents or families who have students participating in close contact sports, if that should happen, really be encouraged to opt out because I think that's, that's a huge hole. What can I say? I mean, we know, we all know the issues there. I heard, I just heard really concerning issues about facilities and the ability to go in just many areas of the schools with no ventilation or poor ventilation. I hear, you know, my children reporting in the winter time that sometimes the windows have to be left open because it gets so swelteringly hot and there's just, I have a lot of concern about that. So, and then I, you know, so I'm trying to weigh, we're all trying to weigh the costs and benefits of what we're doing here. And I know that the harm of having students out of school is, is great and real and, and actual. So it's been, we've incurred that harm and we're continuing to incur it. But my concern is what we're doing with the hybrid plan is we're giving students two days a week. And that, and that doesn't really, you know, that, we're taking, we're giving two days a week in exchange for what? In exchange for taking on the, the question mark of what's going to happen when kids go back to school this fall. So I know Janet Mills said we're green and I know that that is very important and I think we all, you know, we're, Maine's in a great place. We did the right thing by closing early and I think Cumberland County did, you know, the leadership we showed and the districts closing early is what helped us get where we are. But Cape Elizabeth was the first school district with a student. We're the hot, we're, we're one of the top five cases for the state. We have a higher rate. Effectively, I think if you look at the statistics of our rate as a town, we're akin to my Michigan or Ohio in our rate. At any rate, all that being said, I don't want to, I'm very, I'm very, I'm absolutely torn on this and I don't want to say no, no in classroom instructions because I know that there's a great need and there are students who need to be, who need this. And it's, like I said, the harm is great and the harm is real. But I don't know that the two days in school is the benefit of that outweighs the risk. So I do wonder, why are we rushing into this? I think John Volz had a good point. Why are we the first district? If we were the first district with a case, can we be, you know, are we open to letting other districts open and seeing what happens? Giving, you know, we still don't know if we're going to have the equipment by this start of school. So why don't we say to parents, this is what the first four weeks of school will look like and decide now it's going to be red and then we'll, and then we, and then we go from there. As opposed to if we say we don't, we don't have the PPE and we won't know until the week before school, we're all just sitting in limbo until the end of August. So we could make a decision to say it's just going to be red because we're not ready. I mean, I'm not saying we're not ready, but. So those are my thoughts. Like I said, I'm torn as I'm sure everyone else is and I'd love to hear what everyone else has to say.
Phil. Go ahead.
I guess I'll go next. That was, you know, I shared a lot of those concerns and landing in a different place. So I've thought about a lot of the things that Hope just said and struggled with that since our meeting two weeks ago. Where I'm coming down is I think it's extremely important for certain kids, particularly young kids, to have some classroom time. I think it was not successful in my view for a lot of young kids. It's very difficult for kindergarten, first, second, third grade kids to do this on their own. It's very difficult for parents to be able to teach them full-time. We're not, we don't have a plan in front of us that would, that had older kids stay home and your kids come back, but I would have been comfortable with that. And I'm not trying to change it this late in the game, but I've always thought it was, it was more difficult for, for the children of younger ages to, to, to be out. And, and I think it hits families and we're disparate level. You know, some families, we were one of them, quite frankly, that could, could have some come in and help. And we know a lot of parents who could not. And I think that, that suffers. It's, it's a really full-time job to work with kids at home when we're talking about K through four or even a little bit older. I think we worked really hard as a state to get to where we are. As of yesterday, you know, Dr. Shaw said we had a 0.74% positivity rate. I had one parent, I reached out, everyone I know in this community, asked them what they thought, and that was one comment that sort of stuck with me, which he said, if this isn't what we were working for, then what is? It's still a very much a risk and I hear the nurses have said, and I, I think we need to be ready to close, quite frankly, if things change the next day. So it's not to push through and be stubborn about it. But, but from what I'm hearing from the CDC, from the Department of Education, from our neighboring communities and from our governor, that, that, that we're okay to open with guidelines, I think it's extremely important for educational purposes for a lot of our kids to have some of that face time. It doesn't work as well for some as others. And I think we leave a lot of kids behind if we just say five days a week at home. It really, it really makes me nervous, quite frankly, to go into that model. So I, I sort of look at the, as the outlier. I don't see it as let's, let the other districts, I think would be all of them at this point are going back in some way, be the guinea pig. I think we would be the outlier as to not. And I, you know, I, I do think it's also important to respect the parents. I think the last, I think Donna reported at the last meeting, I think that it was 75% of the parents in this town who participated in the survey want their kids to go back in some way. And I think we heard from Jeff, at least we heard from Jason Maringeridis, that it sounds like at least 80% of the kids are opting in for some sort of classroom experience. He's got about a classroom per grade that doesn't want to do that. So I think it's, I think it's important for people to have that choice and parents who don't want their kids to go in can, can have them not go in. But there are a lot of kids, we know that through the surveys we've done, that the parents want their kids to go in. So I think we should respect that too. And I think the hybrid model does a good job at trying to be as safe as possible, but still providing some education. So that's where I am right now, but I do want to hear what the other board members have to say.
I will say that at this time of the night, I cannot say it as eloquently as Phil, but I completely agree, agree with what Phil said and Phil, you laid it out in a really clear and compelling way, especially listening to the parents and what they want. And we do have options for virtual learning for those parents and students that don't feel comfortable coming in. And I can't even imagine all the time that was spent in planning, Donna and the rest of administration. So thank you for that and so I support this hybrid model.
Other board members? Kimberly.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all for your thoughts and, and thank you to, to the community members for their, their input and their thoughts and their patience with us as we work through all the different options and scenarios. And thank you so much to all the staff who, and administrators and everyone who's given so much of their, of their time and, and heart and soul into this process. And I think, you know, we've all identified there is no, no perfect answer. I, you know, I have five kids and, and watched five very different experiences with remote learning in the spring and it for sure is not a model that works for everyone. As I sit here in the town library parking lot, I recognize connectivity issues alone are, you know, barrier for, for people. I, I hear Hope talking about not wanting to rush in and I, and I see that, you know, things change so quickly with that. I, I see that, but I, at the same time, I feel like our best window to get students into the building is now. You know, I think, I think the delayed, delaying start a little bit and the rollout that has been proposed gives people a little more time to feel comfortable with the building and feel more confident that things can be done safely if people are compliant. I think there's a tremendous benefit for students to be able to see their teachers in person and, and develop connections with them at the beginning of the year with the knowledge that likely at some point we will not be able to continue to go into the buildings. And so having some kind of a relationship established, I think will benefit people tremendously in their learning going forward. I think I would advocate if we did move forward with a hybrid plan, that we assess and evaluate with regularity how we're doing on a safety level, how people are feeling, how things are going and, you know, adapt and change as, as we go along. Likewise with, with remote learning. I think, you know, I think if, if we can check in with people in the remote learning front a little more regularly than we did in the spring and get feedback and, and make changes, we'll be in, in a better place. But it's, it's a tough decision and I, I, yeah, I, I struggle with it. I don't, I don't think there's a correct, correct answer in this, but I do believe that education, even if it's only two days a week for our students being in person, will be valuable.
Thank you, Kimberly. Other board members, Nasser or Elizabeth? Would you like to speak?
I will speak. It's, I mean, everyone has beautifully said, we're in a tough situation and even to this day, I'm not for one or the other because the argument could be the same way, meaning that the coronavirus is holding us back quite a bit. But yet, I'll use me as an example. I was reluctant to go back to work, but to the city hall. And when I did go a few months ago, based on the space and protocols and cleaning and everyone throwing their own garbage as opposed to the person coming grabbing your trash, following some procedures, wearing the mask, making sure there was certain number of people per square foot. And our, in, in, in our dining area has changed and there was two different microphones, different places. Those accommodations were applied and those accommodations are what we're trying to do at the school. And it has worked for us. At the beginning, people were taking temperature for us, then everyone was taking their own temperature and eventually as Karen said, people have, or the, or the, one of the nurses, the people have to be just honest and have to do their at home. So we cannot stay at home because we do not know how long this pandemic is going to last. It could be four months, it could be six months, it could be a year, even if the vaccine is available. So we, we have to adjust to it. And we have to adjust to it just so we can grab the life that we had. But more importantly, But more importantly, for certain kids who needs that, that physical space from a teacher or physical ground, and for the health reason, for the academic reasons, so it's, it's great. But at the same time, we are offering for people to opt out and study 100% from home. If that option was not there, then I could say, okay, the hybrid is not going to work. So the fact that we are providing options, and I think Donna's open to, and certain Jason said that, and others have said that, keep the questions coming, keep the concerns coming. And we are learning this together and we are going to move forward with our option. My question from last time, and this time I'm going to ask, is probably from the nurse and, and we probably do not know, I think it is a bit, asked the same question too last time. What would it take? That's the unfortunate part, is going to be two students, is it going to be five students who are may be positive? Are we going to suddenly stop? Are we going to transition? Are we going to slowly move out? That's one of the questions. And also, I would really like to see the funds, if possible, to be utilized for technology to do more online learning. An ideal world, teachers are going to hate me for this. An ideal world, I would love to see whiteboards, smart boards in each classroom, and the teachers will only attend their rooms and their classes. And as they sit there and they do online, online classes for everybody. And if certain schools are struggling, they can go there on a, on a request basis or struggle basis and sit in that class too. But we are more or less doing that anyways. So the fact that we are open to questions and concerns and, and willing to accommodate even the hybrid option even further, the, even for the fact that we can stop it at a certain point if necessary. So I would have to say the fact that we are offering multiple options or two options, or we are more or less satisfying everyone that was submitted their response to their surveys. So that's my two cents for now. And as, as we said, it's late and she does not sleep beyond nine, nine o'clock, so.
So I'm going to speak up because I spent this time really listening to my fellow board members because there have been days where I felt like I knew what I wanted to vote for, and then days when I changed my mind. And then I really made an effort to come into this board meeting completely open-minded, to be willing to be persuaded, to feel that, you know, whatever we chose to do, the risk was not greater than the reward. And so I appreciate my board, my fellow board members. I think that we are kind of ignoring the fact that we don't have great ventilation issues. We are not going to be going into this in a good situation. No one has been able to convince me that we should ignore that. I don't undervalue the value, the importance of face-to-face contact, but I think what everybody needs to remember is number one, we surveyed parents over a month ago. And many, many, many parents have come up to me and said, oh my gosh, if I could just change my answer, that was crazy. Because I, when I thought about it, I asked my child, do you want to go back to school? And do I want them to go back to school? It was back to school the way school used to be. And that's not on the menu. School is not going to be a social, emotional, positive experience. They are not going to be congregating at their lockers. They're not going to be chatting at lunch. They're going, it's going to look very different. It is not going to be a positive social experience. So I found that interesting. And I don't believe that we should let any survey, especially a month-old survey, drive us. But every, you know, the emails that poured in over the last 10 days were compelling. And honestly, most of them were not in favor of getting back into the buildings. They were data-driven, like this one that, that talks about the August 10th, 2020 current risk probabilities for events in schools operating in Maine. This is not data taken from anywhere else. So in Cumberland County, the risk event set for an event size of 100, which is smaller than what we're talking about, is 28%, which means at least one person attending an event is likely to have COVID-19 or will have COVID-19. The next risk event size for Cumberland County was 81%. We would be looking at closer to 225 students, but then you add staff on. And it's, it's, it's not what makes me change my mind or push me, but it's, it's data that really shouldn't be ignored. So I, I put that out there. I don't know. I think we, I, I think that our administrators have done an exceptionally outstanding job at developing these plans and they're incredibly thoughtful. But does the reward of two days in the building greatly outweigh the risk of two days in the building? And does it meet the criteria of being the safest option while also being, delivering high-quality education? And I guess I'm pretty dismayed to hear that we're not going to be able to offer really truly high-quality education, no matter what this year. And I am really disappointed about that. I'm concerned about our students going off to college in a couple of years, having had half their curriculum, and, and wondering if we had gone to 100% remote that they really could meet on a much more frequent basis and do that. And maybe we call it remote plus, where students with disabilities do come into the campus, students with other issues do come into campus. I think several staff members mentioned this at our last meeting, which is, we can call it what we want, but it's a different option that does offer services and options and even possibilities for, you know, bringing students for that social, emotional. However, people vote tonight, I think the parents need to really understand that they need to plan their social, emotional experiences for their children outside of school, because school is not what it used to be. And that shouldn't be relied upon for those experiences. So I don't know how I would like to vote. What I wish I could vote on isn't on the table, which is sort of a remote plus, which would involve, you know, maybe students coming in to visit in small groups once in a while, prioritizing actual emotional relationships. And this, especially special ed kids who need those in-person services, which I 100% agree. There are many students that need those services in person and perhaps young children who aren't really able to access their education through the remote model. So thoughts? Those are just my thoughts.
I would just reiterate what Elizabeth said, what, what I-
Raise your hand again, Hope.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Ideally, I think Elizabeth's point, what, what I want isn't on the table. And it's, it would be a safer option for everyone who is in schools, which is a lower population. And I think the survey is probably wildly inaccurate because I know at least four families who answered differently on the survey for what, from what they're actually doing or choosing to do now. So we don't really know what those numbers are. And maybe if we knew, we have 20% of the population going in and 80% choosing remote, that totally changes what it looks like. And, and we just don't have that data right now. But I, to go back to my original point, I, I don't want to derail planning and I don't, I don't, not disparaging the planning process, and I don't devalue in-person education. I do just feel simply that the two days in, I don't know that that's enough of a benefit to outweigh the risk that I see. And maybe, and maybe it's just, it's, it's not, it's not as much of a risk as we think it is, but we won't know until schools start to go back. And I think that's where, you know, again, the, the possibility of not being the first school that goes back in Maine would be ideal. And I know obviously it's not on the table, so.
But it is on the table?
No, I said that's not on the table. Oh, I, I don't know. I mean, we have, we don't have any-
We have a vote. It's on the table. I think anything's on the table.
Well. My greatest concern, I'm sorry, I'm still, I'm still here, is the, we don't know that we have the equipment we need and we know the facilities are, are not to, to standards that are needed for appropriate ventilation. So I feel like the facility, we could get the equipment, but the facility is still going to be what they are. So we're kind of, again, waving our hands and ignoring that part.
My internet connection is not going through.
Heather, I just have a brief comment, if you don't mind.
After all this, I'm frozen.
We can hear your voice, if that helps.
Phil, this is Kimberly. I think if you have a comment, I'm, I'm not sure if Heather's having Wi-Fi issues, but I think go ahead and make it.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to respond since I was the one who brought up the survey. It's come up twice. And that's a very valid point, it's a little stale, but what I, the second part of what I was referring to is at least Poncove parents were, were asked to make a choice by Sunday and then it was extended to Monday. So we have a little bit more data on that in terms of which parents, you know, with the numbers, at least at Poncove School, I'm not quite sure about the other schools. And so I don't know the exact answer, but I was just basing it off of what Jason's presentation was, which said it sounded like he had about a classroom per grade that were choosing the full remote, based on the information that, that Poncove parents were supposed to do. So I was extrapolating that that meant around 80% were coming in. And I, I guess I should ask for clarification on that, if Jason knows that, that information. But that would be a little bit more up-to-date information than the survey from a month ago. Would you like me to answer that, Heather?
Yes, please, if you can answer it efficiently and quickly.
Yeah, so, so we have around 100 people that haven't answered yet, but we have 78 so far that have chosen full remote, out of around 520. So just based on that questionnaire, and that the parents know that that's not their final decision, though. I, I told them that, you know, a district-level registration form would be the final commitment. Thank you.
So I would like to-
Oh, is Heather back?
Go ahead, Elizabeth. Go ahead.
I want to wait for you, but I would say that if it wasn't so late, I would really prefer to offer an amendment to the motion. But I mean, I feel like, you know, people are getting tired. I don't know if we're even doing our best work right now. What I would love to do is, you know, offer an amendment where we vote to go into a hybrid scenario and then make a planned move to remote learning around when they're, you know, the flu season and colds and whatnot are going to coincide with us probably being pushed into remote learning anyway, instead of just being at the whim, like a boat out in the ocean without a rudder. I think that, you know, we've got this rolling start. So we have this, you know, smaller group of people coming in. We hopefully have more outdoor learning time in the warm weather. And then we make a choice to say, you know, November 1st through February vacation, we're remote. And it's planned and we do a good job with it. And we know what we're doing. And it's not like last spring and that sort of thing. So I'm going to kind of leave that in your hands, Heather, because I know it's late and I would prefer to offer an amendment, but I won't if that's just not going to happen at 10:55 PM.
Yeah. Donna, is it possible, I mean, that is food for thought for sure. Is it possible, if we were to vote for remote learning, to revisit this possibility in a month of turning completely to remote learning before the flu season at a specific date? Is that something that we can revisit at another time?
Absolutely. In fact, we were looking at October 31st as kind of a revisit date anyway, so.
So that we could be proactive and make the choice before there were an active COVID case within our district, if we decide to close beforehand?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm at 100% agreement in that. I think that that's a good approach. Thanks for the suggestion, Elizabeth.
Kimberly.
I, this isn't in regards to the planned closing, but just cycling back to Hope has referenced, you know, some of the challenges maybe with athletics. And I, I totally recognize how important the athletics are for a lot of kids. For me, it just creates another, just, you know, sort of conundrum of you have kids probably on, you know, travel teams who also play on the high school team, who may be in a, you know, in a different cohort with their sports team than they are with their school team. It seems like, you know, on the one hand, we're making a tremendous amount of effort to have a cautious, you know, controlled plan. And then, and then just sort of setting it all out to the wind later on. So I don't, you know, I, I know it's still a work in progress. I don't, I don't have a solution. I, I guess for me, that seems like a big question mark, how we can do that and maintain the, the safety that we're, we're working really hard to create in the schools.
Okay. I would second that as well, to really make a plea to families to think through the balance of athletics, along with all the work that administrators and nurses have done to try to create the safest possible re-entry to school. It's late. A lot of people have said a lot of what I've said, what I was thinking. I don't want to speak too much, but I do have, is Perry still here? Yes, I see you, Perry. I just have one question for you that's incredibly concerning to me. Having been on the building committee, knowing the state of our buildings, knowing how hard and challenging it is to clean them, and then tonight, hearing about the ventilation. I recognize fully that there is no guarantee of safety, that nobody can say we can take all the precautions necessary in coming to the schools and be 100% safe. But I have to say that was incredibly alarming to me. And I guess I'm asking for your opinion, having all these high school students walking around in hallways that have no ventilation, having nurses that are in rooms that have no ventilation, and then perhaps changing ventilation from central offices to share that with nurses. It, it, it just seems like where I land and my concern is neighboring districts may be able to open in a hybrid situation because of their building. Donna had spoken earlier that, you know, the factors are going to be, I think the two factors you stated were nurses and, and I think we're missing a little elephant in the room here about our buildings. Are they conducive to being able to bring us in safely? And I get that there's no guarantee. But- But you're the professional here. You're, you're, you're the one I'm looking to for guidance. I mean, is it, I guess I need your opinion. Are you comfortable with us sending students and teachers into these buildings based on that information you just gave us? And I'm not saying that I need buildings that are shiny and perfect and beautiful. And I think that we can make do with rooms. But if we are consciously sending students and parents into buildings that are unsafe, that's like the stop for me. Because I was pretty on board with hybrid, and I was, I was pretty on board with some of the conversations that were happening, and that is just a huge cause for alarm for me. So do you mind speaking to that, Perry?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little on the spot as far as-
I know, I'm sorry.
You know, it's, it's because, because all I have to go by is guidelines, and it's really difficult to say, because nobody really, nobody gives you a point you need to hit. All I know is our air quality, and this is nationwide, this just isn't Capelisian. There are many schools that are of similar age and are struggling with the same thing. That's a simple Google, and you will see that across the country. Our equipment is like the building, 50 years old. And, you know, Jeff Shad and I got into some conversations when we were trying to process better filtration and things like that, where we've seen where they're recommending like a MERV rating of 13, which is a more dense filter for filtering out just everything, dust, polyps, germs. They're making that recommendation. Our equipment cannot exceed a MERV 8, because it just doesn't have the velocity. If you were to put a thicker filter on, it would ultimately cut down how much air comes out the other side through the vents. So we are dealing with an age system. I'll say I'm concerned, and that's why I brought it up. I felt that if I don't bring it up, I wouldn't be doing my job. That's all, that's all I got to say right now. We don't meet standards set by the, I'm drawing a blank right now, it's getting late. But the people that regulate air quality in the space, Asher, I think it is, we don't meet all their qualifications. So unless the CDC or WHO gave me some type of point we needed to hit, then I could answer it better whether I thought it was dangerous or not. All I can do is give my recommendation that, yes, there's areas where we're not hitting those and not even coming close.
And so, to me, that sounds like we're putting students that are at the age closest, the most vulnerable students, the age closest to the adult age, which is the most susceptible, at the highest risk, because you mentioned the high school being the school that had the worst ventilation.
Right, and I think Jill Young had put it best that we don't, we may not have a single person in the district who was carrying COVID, but we have to treat it as if everybody does.
Right.
And, you know, I tell people when we're disinfecting the buildings, we can disinfect the buildings, you know, that they're hospital-grade in the morning, but as soon as people enter the building within the first hour, it's contaminated again. And we have to treat it that way.
Thank you, Perry, for speaking up again. I would like to say that I think that a lot of the emails that came were emails from teachers with concerns about returning to work and the ventilation and the contact that they would have with students. I think the three principals have done, and they're, the groups, the cohorts that have helped them, have done a phenomenal job being creative and minimizing those risks. And so I really, really so very much want to commend you on that. I hang my hat, before I came to this meeting, as I said, I was a proponent of the hybrid, and I'm hanging in my hat, and I don't, I don't, I can't support that under the state of the buildings right now. I know it comes at a risk of the students that are in most need, and I hope that we can work on that to make something shift in that. But I, in good conscience, I just feel like we're putting people in harm's way. So that's where I land. Are there any other comments? Kimberly?
This is more just a question, but are there any options for like portable ventilation or any, you know, anything that might improve our ventilation but not be a complete overhaul?
We're looking into some areas, such as Karen's office, to be able to try to correct that. But something like the hallway, not that we're seeing right now. The hallways at the high schools do not have windows that open. They're not designed to open. We've discussed the possibility of opening doors to the hallways, but then we have to weigh that against a security risk that the building is open to the public. And not even as a danger to the student, but would other parents or other students not in the school that day, they would be able to gain access to the building when they're not supposed to be there? So, yeah, as it stands right now, we don't have one. And like I said, it kind of goes back to that moving the air. Those type of units more than likely would blow air. Like you can get portable air conditioners and use something like that, but it blows the air and causes a direction, you know, where the ventilation that comes out of your ceiling usually travels about 10 feet across the ceiling before it starts to fall naturally by gravity. And that's so, you're not creating that drafty feel when you're sitting in your office. So that you don't have that push of air blowing germs around like you would if you had a fan shooting down a hallway, moving the air quickly.
Thank you, Perry. I have a follow-up, maybe more for the nurses. Would if students and staff are wearing masks in the hallway, would that, you know, they're presumably passing through that space into better ventilated spaces with that? I don't know. Can I anticipate that might help a situation, or we just don't know?
I guess I can speak. This is quite frightening, actually. I was not aware of the nurse's office lack of ventilation, and it has me very unsettled. My stomach hurts. I feel sick. Like, this is frightening. Okay, let me put that aside. And the fact that we're considering using ventilation from the main office and doesn't sound like there's a great solution, and our buildings don't sound safe. And my job is to ensure safety and well-being of our students, our staff, and our community. And I've known this going in and really struggled with this, that I can't do that. But this, but, you know, given the circumstances, I will do my very best in my role to do, you know, work at my best potential and give it my all. But this situation is something I can't control, and even more so, and it's frightening. But the hallways, so we wear masks to protect others, not ourselves. Those cloth masks are not medical-grade. They're protecting others. They're protecting them from the air we breathe out, not as much as, you know, they're limiting that, the travel of the droplets out and not as much in. And that's why the ventilation is so important. And the hallways would be the area of concern, and we've talked about that. There's a lot of passing, especially in the high school, and there's concern with that age range. There's concern with our staff. Our staff is, you know, not young, and they're in those hallways, too. We have a senior staff, and we're thankful to have that. But there's just a lot of concerns with the ventilation and the safety of our building, and bringing students back into the building that's not safe is frightening. Phil, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I have a, just a follow-up for Perry. Just to clarify, because I want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding, you're talking about the high school when you were talking about the hallways in the nurse's office?
The hallways in the high school are the worst, because they have never had a ventilation system installed from when it was built in 1969. The elementary school and the middle school does have ventilation, but I believe it may only be like one or two vents per hallway. That's it. So it's, it's not desirable, but it does have, it doesn't, it doesn't meet standards, is, I guess, is the best way of putting it.
And is that, is that the case? I know you, it's hard for me to put you on the spot, but setting aside the high school, it sounds troubling. But the other buildings, is that, is that a standard? I mean, we're talking about all the other districts, you know, with the same, some with the same schools. Is that a standard thing, or are we, are we just an outlier here? Is this a really bad situation for our schools? Or is this, would this be standard around the state for these kind of buildings?
It's standard for the schools that are equal to ours in age. Our immediate surrounding schools all have newer facilities, so they have the upgraded ventilation systems and rooms, such as Elizabeth said, rooms that haven't been converted into spaces and closets that are, have become offices and things like that. But, but anything in our, in our range, certainly Northern Maine, I'm sure is dealing with the same issues. But like I said, if you simply Google air quality in schools in America, it's an issue. It's really, the newer, the newer schools are the ones that are a little better off than the rest of us.
Yeah. Our preschool, I know, would put in ventilators to the hallways, and that seemed to work there. I just want to circle back, because I alluded to this in my, in my commentary at the beginning, but I said I didn't want to do it because it would complicate it, but I think I'm going to ask for the amendment. I, from the very beginning, I was, you know, and we can look right across the river to Portland, right? So Portland is proposing a different model of having the schools at least 10 through 12 not go in, and K through 9, in their case, go in. I would urge us to not think of a one-size-fits-all. I think what we just heard about the high school is very troubling. So, and so at this point, unless we get more information, I guess I'm, sorry, you know, I would be more insistent on that model. I was just going to suggest it before, but now I'm more insistent on it. I do think we should treat the lower schools differently. I would hate to have us vote because of what we just heard about the high school and say that means, you know, the kindergartners can't go in either, if we have a different set of facts. So that's where I am. I don't know how that, what that would look, but, you know, to the extent there would be an amendment, I would, I would offer that. I know that in this town, we like to have equity, and we want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to go in if we're going to go in or not go in if we don't. But I think it's, we should think creatively about that. And if, and if, you know, older kids have higher rates of transmission and the buildings are less safe, then maybe we treat the high school differently and not just make a decision for all grades because of that one piece of information we just got. So I'd just offer that. I'm sorry, I just want to say one other thing, because it's incredibly frustrating, I have to say it. As a member of the building committee, and I know all of members here were members of the building committee, our buildings need work. We had a lot of time. It's not the time now. We've got to work on reopening, but I, but I hope we get back to that really soon, because what we're here, our building, if we're, if we're having to make a decision because on our kids' education, because of something that should have been taken care of years ago, and now we're hearing about it because of this problem, that's incredibly upsetting. And, and we need to work on our buildings sooner rather than later. I think this is obviously giving us a supercharged reason to do it. And I, and we had to shut down those meetings for a reason. But this is just all the reason why, once we get through the reopening, that we need to go right back to those meetings and present something to the community, because the last thing we want is to actually shut down a building in a time when there's not a pandemic because of the air quality. And so, anyway, I just felt like I had to get that off my chest, because it's been, it's something we need to, we've been having to work on, and we've shut that down for a reason, but we need to really get back to that once we get past the reopening.
Now, sir.
Yeah, maybe Perry will give us a 101 lesson on ventilation. Is the air being circulated? And you also refer to the article or to your research, too, that people do catch viruses in hospitals through the ventilation system as well. So is the air circulated, or does it actually bring a fresh air from outside and sucks the air that's in the room? Can you describe how it's supposed to work and how does our work? And especially when you mentioned that you're going to take something from the main office and share it with the nursing office, how does that work? Are we just taking air from one room to another room? Or can you describe with that? And also on your research part, what is the research that you discovered? Or you, because I heard that also, that people do get, catch this disease through the ventilation as well?
Yeah, I, like I said, I just learned about, or just before we went into the meeting, I had read an article that I think we'll hear more about later. As far as I'm coming to the conclusion that this could be contagious by aerosol, which is just breathing in and out. It goes past a cough and a sneeze. But I think we're still early in the game for that, like that, that just hit the news right before the meeting. That would definitely be a game changer, because now you're talking about something that is floating in the air for, you know, could be hours. Anyway, back to the, back to the ventilation. The, in the normal operating time, we mix indoor air with outdoor air. So, and that's especially in the wintertime. So you're not drawing in 100% outside air and trying to heat it to 80 degrees to allow to heat the space. We would mix it with 70-degree air that could be in the classroom. And so you're mixing fresh air and existing room air together, which blows back into the room. What we're going to, what we would be doing to our ventilation system is opening those air dampers wide open for fresh air. And those will bring in 100% fresh air and exhaust the existing air through, back out through the building. The nurse's office, the nurse's office, I'm a little baffled as to why it doesn't have ventilation, because all the rooms around it do have ventilation. It's a really strange setup. The high school has two conference rooms, a large conference room and a small conference room. Both those spaces have an excess of air in them. Many, you can actually hear the air blow out of the ventilation, and it's actually too, too strong for the space. So what I, what we're looking at, what we can do there is actually take some of that air away from those conference rooms and blow it into the nurse's office. And same with removing the air as well. It's not uncommon. Last year, I went into those conference rooms and actually throttled the vents down, because they were blowing too strong and being disruptive for meetings. So I know it has the capability of supplying the air. It's just a matter of rerouting ductwork and getting it into the nurse's office. My larger concern is obviously the hallways and the transition of classes and things like that. Did I get all of them?
Yeah, I think you did. So the answer is- So the answer is no to the question that the air is actually grabbed from one room to another room? Is that a yes or no question?
In some spaces, it varies. In the middle school and elementary school and parts of the high school, we have a rooftop unit, which comes down, the air comes down into the building and goes to multiple areas from that one unit. 90% of the high school classrooms have what's called a unit ventilator, which is a through the wall, similar to what you would have in a hotel room. And that unit is designed just for that space. So it's a combination of the two style of units.
Okay. So this last common question. So if the article from New York turns to be true, and then in a week or so, we find out that it is airborne, the ventilation is not going to help us, do we make a decision of not having a hybrid option? So as you said earlier beautifully, you have sank my battleship. So it's constantly chasing our tail, basically.
Yeah, I think we'll learn, we'll learn more. If anything becomes of this aerosol that they discovered, that they're actually, it is actually airborne. I think that they've proven it. Now I guess what they have to do is prove, is that airborne particle enough to cause you to be sick? So we're all learning as we go right up to the top, so.
Elizabeth, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. So number one, The New York Times is sort of like the last place that this information lands. It is in the air. The science supports that it's aerosolized and it is circulating. All medical experts agree. So it's sort of a moot point. It's what Perry said, is it enough to make people sick? So there we go. I appreciate Nasser asking specifics about our ventilation system, but I'm not a ventilation expert and Nasser is not. And the American Society, and I don't remember, I was on the board at the time. I'm trying to look it up. We don't meet standards in any of our schools. It's just worse at the high school, but we don't meet standards in any of our schools. And I will do my best. I'm looking now. It is, God, whatever. The American Society of Heating Refrigeration Air Conditioning Engineers, something like that. Perry, I mean, he'll, we don't. And to echo Phil, I hope every member of the community watches this, that our schools may not open because our buildings are so bad. And it is time and we need to invest the money into these buildings. Anyway, the ventilation is not appropriate. It's distressing. And the last point I need to make is that I believe Phil made an amendment and I hope it was an official amendment because the board needs to either accept or reject the amendment. We can, if it's a friendly amendment, meaning that the board is fine, then we accept the amendment. Otherwise, we have to vote on discussion of Phil's amendment. But I, this board member accepts the amendment.
Just so you know, Elizabeth, I hadn't forgotten that. I was going to come back to it, but thank you for bringing that up again, Hope.
So Phil's amendment, was Poncove open? The other two, no? Or, I'm not sure. I just, we need to clarify on that. But I was going to comment on that, that I think the middle school also has, the middle school was built in 1930s, I believe. I think we can only, you don't need, you know, scientific or HVAC certificates and understand what the ventilation looks like in there. And I just wanted to sort of try to say, you know, we can't, we each may have, I have ideas for an amendment too. You know, I'd say, put us, you know, start in red. And if I'm wrong, we'll know. And then we go yellow and we're all more comfortable with it. That's, you know, that's my amendment. I don't know that that's how this, you know, what's the most efficient way to do this? I don't know. I know we need to just give parents a decision. And it'd be nice to give them the plan tonight to know this is what it's going to look like. So.
Laura.
I think it's good that, and even though I'm nowhere near an HVAC specialist or ventilation specialist, it is good to hear though. And although it's distressing to hear the state of our buildings. And I like Phil's amendment, but then I also heard from Perry that, okay, the elementary school does not meet standards. None of our schools meet standards. So then if that's the case, although I was a strong proponent of the hybrid model to start, this really does change my opinion. But then like Hope said, if we start off red and then, okay, then we decide after a little while to go to yellow, I don't think we can decide to go to yellow until we fix the ventilation in our building. So then that would be quite a long time, I would think.
Elizabeth, Hope and Laura still have hands up. I don't know if they're forgot.
Oh, I can put it down.
Okay, Hope.
So my point, if we start in red, we will know soon, we will have data from Maine within a month of what happens elsewhere. So if everybody, if it goes well and nothing, there's no outbreaks and schools are going fine, then we could all feel more comfortable with actual data based on our state to the yellow. And I think then we could maybe set aside the ventilation issue. But I, so that was my point, that if we discover that other schools can do it and it's not, the numbers don't go up, then we have a little bit more comfort. That was my point.
Yeah, I'm really struggling with this. Because for me, it's not about, to me, it's about the ventilation only. So like, obviously, I had already said, I'm comfortable with a hybrid model. In fact, I think it's the best model for the kids. And given the data, I mean, we're not experts, you said, I'm not experts in ventilation, but I'm also not expert in health. And so I'm going on what the CDC is saying and the governor's saying on the reopening and, you know, and our plan. I mean, that's what I'm basing it on. I'm not setting, I'm not putting myself in those shoes. But I have concerns about the ventilation. I mean, to me, it's about that. So if we're going to go red, we're not going to go back, in my view, if it's about ventilation. Because that's the only part that I'm thinking about at this point. It's not about, it's not the other side of it. You know, look, I was, I even hate to say this because I don't want to delay. I really don't. I think parents, teachers need to know, but parents really need to know. I mean, that's what I heard the most when I run surveying people. Teachers clearly to know. Parents keep on asking me, do I need to get a sitter? Do I need to get, you know, I don't know what I'm supposed to do. And honestly, people are being taken up already. You know, the help that people are going to ask for, you know. And so we need to make a decision. But this feels very last minute to me, I'll have to say. And for us to make a shutdown decision for the school because of what, you know, at 11:30 and we're hearing, you know, a little more detail on that, where we haven't heard it tonight. I just, I feel very unsettled making that decision based on that reason. I want to know, is this something that, I think it is important to know. Is this something that the experts have looked at when they're talking about reopening schools? You know, is it something that we need to be concerned about? If it's something we need to be concerned about, then we should be concerned about it. And again, I'm talking about the other two schools. I mean, I'm concerned about the high school and I would still offer my amendment, whether it's tonight or next week, to have full remote at the high school. But I feel like I need to know a little bit more about the ventilation issue. I just feel very unsettled saying, we're closing down because we've got, our buildings were built in 1960s. That, you know, that just doesn't feel, it's not based on science to me at this point. I want, I'd like to know what that means, you know, what the experts are saying about that in this state and around the country about our schools, before I can just make that decision, which I will affect, remember, I mean, I know you guys know this, but I'm thinking about, it's going to affect obviously everyone in this town and their kids. And they're really to have kids home. So I don't know if we can get information in a week. But at 11:30, I'm thinking like, you know, this is, it feels very last minute to me on the ventilation issue.
So I see Laura and Nasser for a second. I am feeling the same way. It's hard to think. It's a five hour meeting. I know that there's a need to have a decision. Donna, what are our options as far as tomorrow night, the next night, the next week? If we, if we don't come up with a decision tonight? Which I know is the best case scenario and I know everybody wants it. But this is a really big decision on our part, the seven of us. And this is like a game changer.
We have been working on, you know, the plans for the hybrid model. We've been working all along on plans for 100% remote. So it would mean that we would just continue working on both sets of plans.
Can we have a meeting tomorrow, Thursday night? I mean, we have administrators here.
I don't think we could get answers by Thursday night. I'm not even sure what the questions are at this point, so.
I think part of it is for us seven to like pause and think and make it on 11:30 at night.
Next Tuesday night, probably.
Okay. I'm going to, I would like to go in that direction and ask board members one at a time if they're okay with that. I do see Laura and Nasser with their hands raised.
Oh, this is just an old hand raise for me. I just can't get it down at this point, disregard.
Nasser, is this something that you want to say right now before I go and ask individual board members the question?
I think you can ask a question, yeah, because I am leaning towards that and I'm having second thoughts based on what I'm hearing. Because as much as the teachers and we, the administration, can control with masks and sanitization and all that. And if the buildings are trapped, why do all that? Why all do that? So we want to know if the ventilation, if the buildings are trapped for this or not. So I am ready to extend this till next week, if necessary.
I'm just going to go through. Kimberly, are you willing to press pause right now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Phil.
Yes, I am.
Nasser just said he was, Hope?
Yes.
I feel like we're putting Perry in a really bad spot and he's going to come back and say, the ventilation is bad and schools close. I think we already know the answers. You know, so I feel like this pause is another, I don't think we should, I'd love to make a decision tonight. That's my feeling, is I feel like the waiting is just killing everyone. I don't, you know. So I'd move forward tonight or wait. But I, I mean, I think we really should give people an answer.
I do too. And I think if it were 8:30 at night and some of this, I mean, it's hard to think after five hours and it's hard to weigh the options. And I think I'm still a proponent for waiting. I hear very clearly what you're saying, Hope. But I definitely am going to push for a pause. Elizabeth.
So I agree with Hope. There's no new information to be had. We know the ventilation is bad. We know it doesn't meet standards. There's nothing more. We've got the report from Colby Company and Engineers that told us all this. I mean, we got some more alarming specifics tonight, but honestly, there's no shock in my face. This was expected. If people feel like we need to pause because of exhaustion, that's a different thing. As far as putting Perry on the spot to get more information, we're not getting anything new. The ventilation is terrible. It's horrible at the high school, maybe not quite as bad at the elementary school. And I don't even know what to say about the middle school. So I'll go with the will of the board.
I agree. I'm not, I'm not asking for a pause to put Perry on the spot, Perry. I want you to hear that loud and clear. I agree. I don't know what more information he can get. I knew the buildings were in tough shape. I did not know the ventilation piece of it, which is a huge component to contracting the illness. And I honestly am not, I can't think right now. And I am personally feeling tremendous pressure at this point, making a decision at this hour. So it's more not for more information, but for time to pause and think and digest this and say, is this enough to close the buildings? I think it is, but it is such a huge decision that it's not, it's not in my comfort level to make it at 11:30 at night. That's where I'm coming from.
Heather, if we table this discussion, can we at least move on to the calendar, which seemed like a pretty straightforward vote?
Before you table this, what about, can you, Heather, can you, I know your brain is a bit now, can you at least follow what Hope said, that we accept amended and follow that we open schools in red and then make a decision further? Or is that still not an option?
I think that if we're voting red, we're voting red for a couple of months. I don't think we're saying we're voting red until next Tuesday when we meet again. Because I don't think that helps the administrators at all. We don't want to give them false hope that, or false idea that if we're just going to come revisit it in a week. I think if we're coming to revisit it in a week, we're coming to revisit it in a week and not to lead them down a certain path to then potentially disregard it and head into.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, red is basically buying time. We don't necessarily buy time, okay?
We can buy time if we want to buy it for two months. I don't think it buys us time for a week. Donna, you were going to speak?
No, no.
About the calendar when Elizabeth spoke up, or no?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Sorry, as a member of the community, perhaps I'm not supposed to be speaking at this point, but there.
I have to interrupt because I've made it clear to everybody. I'm so sorry, but this is discussion for board members only at this point. I know the community input is very important. I just see your name is Nelsons. I don't know your first name. My apologies for speaking to you in this way, but just out of respect and equity, nobody else has been able to speak up. And so I'm sorry to cut you off, but this is discussion for the board at this time. So again, my deepest apologies. I'm just following policy right now. I mean, I suppose we could, go ahead, Phil.
I just wanted to respond to a comment Elizabeth made, which I appreciated. But I just want to make it clear, it's not that, it's not based on being tired. It's really based on understanding what the HVAC system is. That's a really big reason to close the schools for these reasons. And if it wasn't safe before, it wasn't safe now, right? It's, is this a safe building? We have the cool report. You know, I know some people who work at places where, before they went back, they had a, and I just got an email from someone right now saying they had an epidemiologist and an HVAC expert walk through, get a report, and then they went back. That's the kind of, and if we had something like that and I, you know, it said that was not safe, then I would say that's something that I'd like to know. And that we vote, if it comes back and they say, no, that actually makes no difference or whatever. I would just like to base it on actual facts and not the report which we have sitting around. You know, it's a report we need to act on. We need new buildings, as Elizabeth said. We need to work on that very soon. But to then use that at 11:30 at night for the reason to close and not for other reasons, you know, that we've been talking about, that's just where my concern comes from. I just want to understand the issue better. And it just feels like at the last minute, right? And I think the community will feel that too, quite frankly. I think I'm speaking for a lot of members of the community when I say that. So if we come back in a week and we have better information and it looks like it's just too bad to open, then that's it and we won't open. But it really is less about the lateness of the day. Because I just want to be clear, I think we should have voted tonight. I think we owed it to the administrators, the parents and the teachers to have an answer very soon. So that was my strong preference. And I, but I now think, given. So that was my strong preference and I, but, but I now think, given the situation where I think this is going, I think I want to understand it better before I vote on it. And I'd say no more than a week because I, people, people need to know. So that's, that's what I'd put a plug in for, no longer than next Tuesday if possible. I'll stop talking.
Now my hand raised is actually a real hand raise, Heather. It's not the fake one. So I agree with what Phil says, that if we actually have someone come in and assess the buildings and assess the ventilation, because none of us are ventilation experts. And maybe it is like what Elizabeth said, like, listen, there's no surprises here. We don't have adequate ventilation. It doesn't meet standards in any of the buildings. And then our decision is really clear. And I think we can defend it really clearly to the community and also then bring it to everybody's awareness, the state of the buildings. But I would like to see some type of concrete, this is it. The ventilation is not adequate. But I don't know, can we have that turned around by next Tuesday? I'm not sure if that's an option. Or do we really look into this and just not rush into it and delay the start of the school a month until we have a thorough investigation? And then we can all present to the community with confidence in our decision. And you know I'm tired because you know my bedtime said nine, but I'm not saying this because I'm tired. I think the information needs to be there and I would like to see the information before the meeting so that we can look over, digest it and then ask questions during the meeting. But we have some time, you know, to take a look at it. So that is what I'm proposing.
Perry, not to put you on the spot. If we were to vote tonight, hypothetical situation, and let's say we were to vote for remote learning for a month or six weeks or whatever the timeframe was, do you think it's possible to bring in experts and find out more information about what Laura and Phil were saying and therefore we could revisit it with more information?
I wanted to add that my specialty trade is heating, ventilation and air conditioning. It's what my schooling's in and 15 years of doing service work, get it before getting in the facilities. But having said that, I would not mind giving myself a second opinion. And I, you know, as I, as I'm listening to everybody speak, I could probably call Colby Company and have them bring a couple of HVAC engineers out and see what we can get from them. I don't think it, within a week would be a problem. Right, you know, given, given I don't know their schedule right now, it would not be a problem for me to turn that around. And, and, you know, maybe I could have them do the presentation. My, my biggest question is I'm looking, I'm looking at Donna up here in the left side of my screen and I'm just wondering how this decision affects the schedule and what, what parents need to know and things like that.
Yeah. Yeah. Nasser.
Yes, I know Elizabeth says I'm not an expert in HVAC and I agree with her. However, Perry, before you bring any engineers for HVAC, they're going to be checking the physical aspect of it. They're not going to check spraying in one room, certain chemicals, certain smell that would end up in another room as well. They have to inspect it based on today's pandemic reasoning as well. So if you do invite anybody to make sure they take that, that part, sorry, Elizabeth, but I had to put my two cents about being an HVAC expert. So that's it for that.
Yeah, and I do encourage everybody to, I believe it's online, I have it here, I can't share my screen with you, but there, the report is online, I believe on the school's website. You'd have to look at the 2019 one because there is an older 2012 there, but they didn't get into the depth that Colby Company did with, throughout the building. So when I started my touring through the schools and looking into things deeper, I would, I went through the report first. So that, that is out there that you can review on your own after the meeting. Not tonight, not tonight.
Okay, so.
Heather, if I may?
Oh, yes, sorry, Elizabeth.
So I have reviewed the report, I have read it. And my question to Perry is, did Colby Company and Engineers bring in HVAC specialists when they gave us these designations, when they gave us this report? Or, I mean, were, did, have we already had the experts in and they've already told us? And maybe we need an epidemiologist, which I would not be against, but we, I've read the report, did, did like an architect do that or did HVAC specialists do that section?
No, each individual section was done by an engineer that's in that field. So this was surveyed throughout the schools as, by a mechanical engineer. To do the report, plumbing, plumbing, I'm sorry, mechanical does the plumbing as well, but electrical engineer did the electrical part and so on. And structural, did the structural part. It was all individual engineers going through the buildings separately.
Thank you.
Laura, is your hand up again?
Yeah, it's just up. I'm just saying that I'm going to wrap it up for the night because it's been a really long meeting and I have a very big day tomorrow. But if we can wrap up in the next few minutes here, I can stay on. If not, I will have to go.
Okay. I want to go revisit people's desire to vote one more time. I am ready to vote. Kimberly? Do you want to vote or go to next week?
I, I. No, I think I would like to vote next week. I'm with the community and the administrators. I'd like an answer, but I would like it to be an answer I feel good and confident about and I just don't know that I, I need to process this right now.
Phil, are you still wanting to wait till next week?
Yes, please.
Elizabeth, are you still for tonight?
I'm for next week.
Okay. Nasser?
Next week, sorry.
Hope?
I'm, I'm ready to vote now because my vote is not, is not contingent on the ventilation.
Okay. And then Laura, while you're still on?
Next week.
Next week. So it sounds like the majority, and I'm, this is new territory, so I'm asking for help. Is, is this what happens? There needs to be a motion? I don't know what to do now. So anybody who.
Somebody need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to table the remainder of the agenda. Can I do that? Motion to table the remainder of the agenda until next Tuesday, August 18.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. I guess we'll vote. Heather is a yay. Kimberly Carr?
Yay.
Phil Sossier?
Yay.
Elizabeth Seifreis?
Yay.
Nasser Shear?
Yeah.
Hope Straw?
Yay.
Laura D'Nino?
Yay.
And so we just need a final motion to close the evening, please.
I move re-adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
Heather Altenberg, yay. Kimberly Carr?
Yay.
Phil Sossier?
Yay.
Elizabeth Seifreis?
Yay.
Nasser Shear?
Thank you for everyone to be here for this long. Yay.
Hope Straw?
Yay.
And Laura D'Nino?
Yay.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. Good night.